We have our new support tech on board. She started June twenty seventh. So Stephanie Blumer has been here, boy, I bet that's two and a half months. And we finally had the opportunity to hear this. Her for you and that all that. Say we worry about ourselves. Again, Stephanie Blumer, our new center on support.
That's pretty new. Um, so it says, appreciate hearing a little bit about. Right, so uh, recently I worked for about twelve years as a Vottness. Fifty years of sports service in Michigan and Idaho. Uh, my husband and I moved to Minji for his career since my last move was my career. Um, he's a Minnesotan, so and I'm a Missyander, so it's closer to home. Um, happy to be in Minji. I like the garden, drive my bike, looking forward to very more cross country. Seeing a lot of them from the years in recent past and uh, happy to be working and. First, um, just kind of friends with.
Well, welcome, Stephanie. It sounds like Bemidji is the perfect fit for your hobbies, so glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, are there any other new employees? See none, we will move on to item three, identify future work meeting topics.
I have nothing to say.
All right. We will continue on to item four, preliminary budget and property tax levy.
Okay, good afternoon commissioners. It's that time of year where we put the budget together. And begin the process formally with the commission on establishing the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Of course, there's a lot that goes into the budget, been through the process many times before going for you with those parts. But let's just jump right in and get to some of the highlights here. This is the process overview. Like I say, the budget process has been going on for some time, really starts around March or April or so. Kind of behind the scenes with the staff doing a number of different activities. Uh, and then June it kind of officially kicks off with the management team and others. And we begin developing the preliminary budget as a staff, really the management team, department heads and myself. Um, we pull that data together into a preliminary budget. We go through series of conversations eventually. What was new this year is we had a management team review of all the information, one of our budget improvement processes. And then eventually we end on going to the budget committee. Talk about that in just a bit here, but the budget committee started its work early August. And spent countless hours on reviewing all the different various line items for various departments, capital budgets, all sorts of expenditures. Uh, funding trends, revenue, uh, anticipated revenues, those kinds of things. And then eventually all of that gets adjusted through the budget committee process and we pull a budget together, which is where we're at today in September. We've given you the preliminary budget and the preliminary levy that supports the budget. The budget committee members are up here on the screen. Commissioners Godzbig and Sumner, of course, myself, the auditor treasurer, finance director, health and human services director, chief deputy, MIS director. And county veteran services officer were all part of the budget committee for this year. There were a number of things that were really influential, needed to be discussed and kind of worked around or worked on as we develop the budget this year. Uh, of course, one of the biggest challenges for us in developing the budget was. Uh, dealing with the economic pressures that are going on sort of nationally and certainly here at home. Uh, we've had inflation rates that have exceeded forty year averages. That is impacting all aspects of our operation. Including personnel, operations, maintenance, capital construction and capital purchases. Everything that the county purchases is essentially going up, just like it is for most everybody else. So we know that the forty year average for the CPI, for the inflation rate is about two point eight percent. Uh, we saw it starting to rise at the end of last year, posted four point seven percent. Of course, this year. Uh, it's gone as high as nine point one percent year over year, and right now we're trending about eight point five percent year over year. This is, of course, like any organization or any household inflation eats away at the purchasing power of our dollars. And of course, makes everything more expensive. So that's something that we've had to sort of buffer against. We also know that there's been a lot of challenges nationally and certainly again here at home as it relates to workforce. We're seeing a lot more mobility in staff members as inflation rises squeezes certain sectors. Uh, you know, salaries go up in other sectors. We see lots of movement going on. And we've been monitoring this over the last couple of years and we see our staff turnover rate increasing as well. But we've had to be specific and targeted about how we can try to overcome staff turnover because that can be very costly to the organization as well. Other considerations are that we are still below our county reserve policy of six months. Uh, we're holding about four and a half months of reserves. We'd like to get to six months. We need about ten million dollars to get that difference or that gap closed. Um, there's a bit of good news with the silver lining here in regards to growth. Um, I guess depending upon your perspective, the county has grown in property value of quite, quite extensively in this last year. We've seen twenty five to sometimes thirty, thirty five percent increases in property valuations. Um, but our, our building patterns are largely static, so we're not seeing a lot of new building. That may change here in the next couple of years with a couple of projects in the works. But at this point in time, as it impacts next year's budget, the fiscal year twenty three budget, we're not seeing statistically significant growth. In buildings and, uh, and instead we're seeing it in values. Again, just as a reminder, for those you all are aware of this, but for those kind of tuning in for the first time, our property tax base is very small. Just had a conversation this afternoon with the, with one of our citizens. About why our taxes are so high and in large case, our taxes are high because they have a very large area. We provide an enormous amount of services and we have a very small tax base. With which to work with, about twenty five percent of all county land is taxable, which means seventy five percent is not. That places a large burden on a very small tax base and it's a bit unique comparison to many other counties throughout the state. We also have a couple of other drivers that we had to sort of anticipate and start preparing to work through. Uh, and those are, uh, these, these ones on the screen right now are really the dominant drivers in affecting levy this year. In the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget, medical and food costs at the county jail have risen considerably. We're seeing three hundred thousand dollars in increases just between the contracts to provide medical costs and food costs at the county jail. That's over this last year's budget. We're also seeing out of county housing costs continuing to escalate as we get through the pandemic. Um, and we also see crime rising as well. The sheriff will tell you as he has many times that essentially crime is, is rising. And offenders are, um, you know, continuing to cycle through the jail and we don't have the space at the jail. And in addition, we also have, um, uh, the need to out house or essentially house inmates out of our county at other jails. To, to, to make up the room. That cost has risen about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars about a couple of years ago to around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. And in next year's budget, it's been estimated to cost a nine hundred thousand dollars. So that's pretty, those are pretty significantly cost up between just housing and medical and food costs. We're looking about one point one million of, of the levy. Uh, represented by those numbers. As we all know, the new jail project is looming, whatever that sort of takes shape and form will be a lot more conversation in the coming months about that. Uh, there's nothing really in this budget to sort of prepare for that other than, uh, putting the money towards the consulting services. Uh, and, uh, and project management services to keep that project moving forward. Uh, we also have rising costs for hospital level of care expenses. Those who are committed in our community. Who end up going to the hospital and not needing medical services and instead have different. Uh, some sort of behavioral or mental health issue that's not meeting hospital level of care. The county is responsible for covering those costs to a certain extent. And those numbers continue to rise. Um, we've estimated an additional five hundred thousand dollars of expenses on this line item for this next year. So that will also increase pressures on the levy as well as other revenue sources. Uh, this was a big year, as you know, and we'll talk a little bit about this in the regular session, but the union negotiations heard this year. And we had all eight of our labor contracts that were up for renewal. Uh, we have seven of them resolved and one of them going to, um, to a vote tomorrow evening with that particular union. Uh, so a little bit more on that a little bit later in the meetings, but of course. Those impacts associated with rising labor costs have to also be factored into the budget. General fund reimbursements, we still have some money that needs to be transferred to repay the general fund. Uh, for loans that it provided throughout the organization to other areas of our operation that didn't actually, uh, have revenues of their expenses. So let's go to the bottom line first. Uh, we had a series of budget process improvements. That while we, we talked with you about earlier in the year. And I'm pleased to say that through those improvements, uh, we were able to increase revenues by about five hundred thousand dollars. Without having to increase property tax levy. This was done by targeting fees for services. Uh, increasing our aggressiveness on acquiring grants and also getting additional reimbursements through states and other organizations. Additionally, we were able to reduce the budget by about thousand, or excuse me, a million dollars. Uh, by utilizing a line item budget approach, choosing a three year rolling average on expenses over the last three years. Instead of just incrementally growing budget year over year over year, we look at actual expenses averaged over three years. Uh, did a little bit of an analysis and also talked about growing trends. We're able to reduce our budget needs by a million dollars that way. Needless to say, uh, we needed about one point eight two million in new levy spending, uh, over the total of the budget. And that's going to be a levy impact of about six point eight two percent. Now, one caveat here is that that doesn't include K R L S or Kichigami Regional Library Services funding levels. As being resolved yet, that's something that you will need to decide upon. We'll talk a little bit more, the separate slide on that. Talk a little bit more about what that means inside the budget. But as it, as it currently goes, we have a budget that's being presented here at ninety nine point nine million. Not sure exactly how we got under the one hundred million, just happened to work out that way, but, um, but that's what the total budget is. Uh, just want to give some perspective here. County levy has historically been above the CPI or inflationary rates. For quite a while, uh, up until around two thousand and twenty two or last, this, this current fiscal year's budget. Uh, the average levy has been about fifty five percent higher than the CPI because we have so many needs and so many, so many demands. Um, to provide services, uh, we're seeing that kind of flop, uh, this particular fiscal year and you'll see it flop next fiscal year, I'm, I think as well. Uh, so here's what the levy and budget summary looks like. The twenty twenty three budget increases. We've had a total budget increase, not just the levy, but the entire budget has increased about eight point six million dollars. And most of that is funding that is non-levy related or non-levy impacted. So we have a lot of carryover funding that's going to come from fiscal year twenty twenty two into twenty twenty three for highway and road projects. We also have some increases in state aid and other federal aid. We hope to get a lot more of that. Uh, but the legislature's inactivity on some of those fronts has caused us to maintain, in some cases, current status quo funding levels. And then we have continued to use an infusion of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars to also leverage purchasing power through the budget. The proposed levy therefore of the additional eight point six million in total budget only comprises about one point eight million of that. So only about twenty percent of new funding is actually being anticipated to come from property tax levy. Here's what the revenue sources look like for the county. Um, interestingly enough, uh, we're pretty good at spending other people's money. Uh, meaning law, non-locally, only about a third of the budget is made up of local taxes. Um, and so intergovernmental funds, money that we get from the state, for example, or, um, charges for services. Uh, special assessments, licenses and permits, those kinds of fees are also contributing revenue sources. But taxes, meaning the property tax levy only makes up about thirty four, thirty five percent of the total levy. Here's where the majority of the funds go to finance our operation, certainly highway and streets, human services. Public safety, general government and sanitation make up the largest contributors of the expense factor of the budget. Here's the calls I wanted to take to talk about K R L S, the Kichigami Regional Library System. Uh, you received this in your package, so I won't go too far. We also have a presentation by the executive director coming up, so I don't want to take too much of her time. But one of the things that you'll have to decide at some point here is at what level do you want to fund the library? Um, the library serves five counties and nine cities. The state minimum requirement for built random counties about two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars worth of funding. Um, K R L S has requested four hundred and twenty thousand, almost four hundred and twenty one thousand dollars from the county for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Uh, we contributed almost four hundred and ten thousand dollars last year, or excuse me, in this fiscal year budget, which is fifty four percent above our minimum statutory requirements. Um, there's two options that the budget committee has recommended. One option is to fund K R L S at the state minimum. Uh, requirement, which is the two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. Or the other option is to find fund K R L S at the F Y twenty twenty two level, which is the four hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and eighty one dollars. Uh, either way, um, you'll have to make that decision as we get to the adoption of the preliminary budget. The current budget includes the F Y twenty two funding level. And the reason we did that is because once that funding level's set, you can't go up, you can only go down. So we set it high. If the board decides it wants to lower it at some point along the way, it will have the option to do that unless it wants to do it right from the very beginning. But at some point, probably next time we meet in setting the preliminary budget, we'll need to have that sorted out. There are a few staffing modifications to the budget, about three point four two F T E's were added. Uh, two came in the form of health and human services additions. One of them, budget neutral is just a transfer position from that. Over to, uh, the, the county. That's been wanted, wanted handle the, the truancy officer, uh, duties any longer. So the county picked that up, budget neutral because it comes with grants funding to find that, finance that. And then long-term care has been struggling for some time in regards to resources. We've seen growing needs in that area of the operation. There has been an additional, um, long-term care specialist that's been added to that. That position's reimbursed by the state at fifty percent, so it's only about a fifty percent cost to the county. Uh, there's another F T E that was added in the sheriff's office. This is by splitting the emergency management. Um, uh, the emergency manager position and communications supervisor position. They were, they are currently joined right now. So we're going back to the way it was kind of prior to Phil Hodapp when it was, when he merged those two positions. Now we're going back to the way it was. In order to do that, we have, we have to provide about a half and half to each of those to separate them out. Um, and Sheriff can explain more of that should you have questions. Remaining modifications are really just slight increases to a couple of part-time hours with rates. Then I thought it'd be worthwhile talking about the American Rescue Plan money because we get that question a lot. Uh, we have several items in this upcoming fiscal year budget that are being requested as ARPA requests or. American Rescue Plan Act funding requests. Uh, Fallen Ways has two hundred and fifty, two hundred and twenty five thousand from the roll off truck. And then also is asking for forgiveness and writing off its, um, transfer, uh, for the general funds. A sheriff's office has, um, records management software and a transport vehicle. County administration, uh, labor costs for what we negotiated inside the, uh, union contracts. Um, and the website redesign for about sixty thousand dollars. G I S has re-mort, re-monumentation is the second of three years of that project. Uh, natural resources needed a vault toilet and a Minnesota county extension office looking for some video conferencing equipment. So all total, this comes up to about two point, uh, three, two million in ARPA funding requests. And so the next question typically comes with, well, how much money do we have in our book, right? So the county received originally nine point one five million. Um, we have spent essentially about one third of that. In F Y twenty twenty two when it was encumbered under the old rules. The new rules allow us more flexibility, so more things can be covered by it and it also removes the deadline to spend ARPA funding. Uh, ARPA funding has become an important, uh, contributing revenue source for the county offsetting what would otherwise. Need to be revenue sources from other particular areas. And, uh, essentially we have a lot of demands, a lot of needs that could be used or that ARPA funding could be used to pay for. Uh, still about ten million in outstanding countywide unfunded needs. With only about two point one three remaining of ARPA funds that was originally allocated to the county. If the board agrees to the funding requests submitted in the F Y twenty twenty three budget. So the budget is a, is a lot of work. Uh, you all have copies now, um, and there's a lot of, a lot of folks that contribute to the development of the budget. Uh, the county board, certainly your policies, your recommendations, your involvement on the budget committee, your guidance and leadership and support throughout the process is critical. The management team in, in, in heeding that, those policy directives and in doing an excellent job. In balancing their budgets and being responsive and responsible, um, in the development of the budget. Uh, has been just absolutely great with a really good management team, um, putting this budget together. Uh, the budget committee puts lots of hours, um, into development of the budget, looking at all sorts of different things. Uh, asking the tough questions, rolling up the sleeves and, and really turning over stones, looking for money just about anywhere we can find it. Uh, the finance team is the one that does all the behind the scenes, uh, work and I would be remiss to say. That it's not just our finance team here in the administration building, but also health and human services has a separate finance team and so does highway department. So all of them working well together. Finally, Diane Mo, she's the one that kind of puts all of this together, makes it look pretty, makes us all look good. So we have to thank her for that as well. Uh, lastly, I want to talk to you about what's next steps. Uh, the budgets and levy. Preliminary budget and levy have to be strategically approved by September thirtieth to ensure that we meet this deadline. We want to make sure that you get all the questions answered that you have. So please reach out to me or any of the department heads to get those questions answered. And, uh, we anticipate having September twentieth as the next meeting where we'll try to decide on the budget. But after that, if you feel like there needs to be more time and, and more work on the budget, we'll have October scheduled additional meeting should we desire that or need that. Uh, tax statements will be mailed out between November tenth and twenty fifth and we will have a state mandated. Public hearing on December thirteenth, this final adoption on December twentieth. With that, that's all I have. I'll scan for any questions.
Mr. Sheriff, Tom, I thought that you were going to put, maybe this is just my misunderstanding in the past, but I thought you were going to put forward the. The original request from K R L S and then the, the M M E and not, not twenty twenty two. Did I misunderstand that or was that a change that has happened since a previous meeting?
Yeah, great question, Commissioner Olson. The budget committee had decided to include the two numbers, either the F Y twenty twenty two funding amount. Or the, uh, S. Minimum level of effort, the, the state minimum requirement. So it didn't contemplate the twenty twenty three request.
Thank you. But we can.
You can, yes.
I, I am contemplating the request.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, Tom, on the, uh, ARPA funds that are left, you know, you showed the three point two million in twenty twenty two. Does that all include the ten percent administrative fee that we actually are able to retain? So do we actually have a little bit more? Than that, or is that after the administrative fee is deducted?
Yeah, essentially what we did, Mr. Goswige, is to be administrative free out on everything going forward because that's all our funding anyway. Added it to the total. That's what becomes. Great question.
Mr. Andy, so?
No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you very much. Happy reading.
Okay, we will continue on to item five, Kichigami Library Presentation.
All right, my apologies for the delay. So hello, good afternoon, everyone. I am Melissa Wabi, Kichigami Regional Library Director. I have with me today Sherri Gordon, who is the branch manager of our Bemidji Public Library. Um, unfortunately, you could not be here today is Kelly Hanks, who is the manager of our location that is in Black Duck. So they both contributed information to this presentation and I want to thank them for their involvement, of course. And then Sherri is also here to answer any kind of local questions that you might have about her particular branch location. All right, so again, here we are today from Kichigami Regional Library System. I'm the regional library director. I joined in January, so I've learned a lot in the last eight months. Um, gotten our budget prepared and we are now going around to the cities and counties to talk about our budget and. Make sure everybody's kind of on the same page about the information required in there. I don't know how long it has been since anyone came to you from Kichigami and gave you information concerning our organization. So I wanted to make sure and present some of that to you as well. So who is Kichigami? We're nine physical branches, a bookmobile, a headquarters and an e-library of electronic materials and databases. We have sixty two regular staff members as well as substitute staff. We operate on behalf of five counties, nine cities, and we also have two associate libraries within Proing County. And we serve a population of over a hundred and seventy seven thousand county residents. So, uh, just over forty one percent of our population in our five counties has a library card. That's pretty good, given the state average. So what do we do? We try to enhance the quality of life for our residents by providing access to library resources. We try very hard to meet those residents' varied and continually involving needs. We want to really empower our local libraries to enrich their community. We have a large variety of the different operations that we have, very, very small libraries in very, very small cities. And very large libraries in larger cities like here in Bemidji. So we value, uh, the variety that we have and we try to empower those libraries to use their best local knowledge in order to help their community. So we value the variety that we have, and we try to empower those libraries to use their best local knowledge in order to help their community. We value public trust, access, diversity, inclusion, excellence, and innovation. Throughout this presentation, I quote from the public talking about why they love their library. So the internet computers and other programs here are invaluable to our lower income and less privileged community members. A member of the public told us. So how do we do that? How do we meet our mission? We try to have programs for the public education, entertainment, and sense of community. We try to have resources to connect everyone with the information they need at the right time. We have facilities that are safe, welcoming, and adequate for our community needs, and we have well-trained staff that care about and connect with their community members. On the left, you can see some of the various programs that we've had at. The Bemidji Library over the past few months. The library is a happy place for me to go. I always leave burning, holding my stack of new books. The library helps kids be excited about reading, which is very important. Get them interested and get them learning. So we try to create community connections. We try to find ways for partner organizations to reach our audience. We try to find ways to connect our community with the various. Resources that are available throughout our areas. And we try to make sure that everyone has the same opportunity to access those resources. So. Another quote, we got homeschoolers who would not have a rich curriculum without the library. We get so many books for school every week, the big sector of people that we serve. Oh, come on now. Thank you. Okay, so this particular photo is actually from a large legacy event that we had here at the Bemidji Library. We had a speaker speaking about his book, Dr. Anton Troy, if I'm saying that right. So that was a really nice one that we had where quite a big chunk of the community got to come out for that one. So. People say they love the library because you can come and learn anything free. We're able to expand our world without leaving town. Big benefit. So particularly, what do we do in Beltrami County? What do we do for your county residents? So in the Bemidji Public Libraries in the summer of twenty twenty two, we had over thirty thousand visits. We have almost twenty thousand registered users here. We had twenty five seven ninety five circulated items. And again, that is just in the last three months, just during summer. We have over forty seven thousand items in your physical collection. You see quite a lot of public computer internet use, again, just in the last three months. Over twenty six hundred internet uses. Also, it's kind of wireless internet uses where people bring in their own devices and are able to access the internet. Broadband access is kind of something that is a big talking point around this area, and it is something that the library helps to provide. People can come and use our computers. They can bring their own devices. And we make that available to your public. We've also had forty five programs with almost nine thousand attendees. That may seem like an astronomical number, but one thing that we do is we offer virtual programming as well. So we have storytimes that are for the children that we not only host in person for people who can make it into the building. But we also host online for people who are not able to make it into the building. So we try to reach our community in a variety of ways. To make sure that they'll have the same opportunities. There's also meeting room use here at the Bemidji Public Library. So over just the last three months, we had seventy meeting room uses and over four hundred and thirty community members. Were able to use that meeting room free of cost, which is really a big deal. There's not a lot of places you can go to meet these days without having to pay something. So the library is an awesome place for information. Black Duck Community Library also saw a very busy summer twenty two, over fifteen hundred visits. They have over fifteen hundred registered users. They circulated over twenty five hundred items of their seventeen thousand items in their physical collection. Same sort of trend that we saw with Bemidji. There's a lot of public internet uses, and there's a lot of wireless internet uses. A lot of people come in. I mean, telehealth is a big thing right now. Having to do meetings with your lawyer online, especially during COVID times, people were not as able to get in in person and meet. And the library really helps provide a place for them to come and use those services. So they also have had a few meetings. They don't actually have like a meeting room, but they do occasionally allow people to meet in their spaces. They'll kind of clear out the tables and allow people to come together. So even at our Black Duck Library with no meeting room. We saw three meeting room uses, serving nineteen community members. And they do love the children's audio books. They love finding a good DVD to watch. Another big thing that we do for Beltrami County is our e-library. So on our website, we do offer a lot of learning resources, educational databases. We also have access to Flipster for digital magazines. Hoopla for movies, music, audio books, cloud library for ebooks and audio books. And then again, e-library Minnesota helps provide a lot of those electronic resources. So this is really a great place where people can go at any time of the day. They can get in there to see items both for education and entertainment. So in twenty twenty one, circulated over sixteen thousand items. That's the collection of individual items that we have. But that collection have been seen by a hundred and thirty one thousand various downloads. So that got accessed that many times by the people in our five county region. We also have sixty educational databases, which see a lot of use as well, over half a million uses of those databases region wide. So that really is a great support. A lot of schools have trouble with their funding and making sure that they can provide the resources to their students that they may need. And that's one kind of gap in the area that the library helps fill. So we have educational databases where they can do homework, research, find information that they might need for their projects. We also provide access to physical material statewide via interlibrary loan. So even if it's a very niche subject, something you can't find something in our own physical libraries here, we'll go out, we'll find it for you, we'll bring it in for you. Give us the week, give us two weeks, we'll find it, we'll get it in. And that's not just other public libraries. And we can also get materials from academic libraries. So it can also really help serve people that are in college right now, to find the resources that they need as well. Library is a place of learning, and it really helps everyone. So again, I don't know what the last time somebody came and talked to you about Kichigami was. So I'll just go over some of our basics, the budgeting principles. This comes from the Joint Powers Agreement. So again, this is the agreement that our nine cities and five counties signed in order to become a part of Kichigami. So each year, the Board adopts an annual budget, operating budget based on recommendations from our Budget Committee. That Budget Committee is made up of the five county commissioners that are appointed from our five counties. Each city council and county board can establish the revenue that you will provide to us. So we make our budget, and we make our operational request to you, and then we. Eagerly await your feedback. So if any signatory jurisdiction, jurisdiction, excuse me, provides less than the amount requested by the board, then we do. The direct library service and that jurisdiction may be reduced accordingly. So I think really the last time Beltrami County really had to get into this was twenty eleven, when they set that maintenance of effort. So at that time, a lot of our counties asked, okay, well, what are ways that we can reduce our service? It went from a certain amount of funding to ninety percent of that funding in the year twenty eleven. So we looked at different operations like reducing your bookmobile service. So I think that was the time that which bookmobile service was kept the Beltrami County. So the total revenue from cities levees and then counties, month people, all the direct local expenditures. City levees are applied to the service costs for the city library, and then additional costs are included in the county levy request. So the counties contribute to the branch libraries as well. Cities and counties each have the opportunity to suggest changes to service levels in order to adjust that levy request. So again, this is not. Here's the number, and that's it. That's what it will be. We do have an opportunity to have a conversation here and discuss what sort of opportunities would be. Palatable to the county as well as manageable by Kichigami. So here's our budget schedule. May through the July, the Budget Committee met with the Kichigami Board in order to determine our budget principles, review those budgets, suggest and make revisions. They then determined the draft budget, which was distributed to you. At the end of July, you got those budgets, and we asked for your review in September, and the Kichigami Board meeting is coming up September twenty second, just for your information. The Kichigami Board will respond to those budget change suggestions from the cities and counties. In October, we send a letter back to you to confirm those budget change suggestions. And November, Kichigami reviews any further correspondence. And I kind of got cut off from the very bottom here, but it's actually not until. January that the KARLF Board confirms and approves the full twenty twenty three budget. So there is still some time to have these conversations and discuss and try to figure out what would be best for your citizens. Okay, so some of the key factors in this twenty twenty three budget, we do have an incoming union. This is the first union that Kichigami has had. So we do anticipate some wage increases this year as well as other increased personnel costs. We know that our insurance costs are going up. I think a lot of us are dealing with that right now. So that's one particular cost that we are seeing increase. And our Budget Committee kind of came up with a plan. So for this year, what we would like to do is try to make a contribution from the Kichigami reserves. In order to try to keep those levy costs down for all of our partners. So we kind of capped the the levy at three percent across the board. We're asking three percent increases from all of our cities. We're asking three percent increases from all of our counties. And then Kichigami is contributing money as well to try to keep those costs down. So twenty twenty three changes, you are seeing an increase in your branch library budget, so about fifty nine thousand dollars. Again, that's largely based on anticipated increases in wages and insurance. We are requesting almost four hundred and twenty one thousand dollars from Beltrami County for twenty twenty three. That is a three percent increase from last year. As you're looking at the Beltrami County budget, the increase that we're, well, the full levy that we're asking for, it's really the Kichigami Board participation of eight fifty. Plus the branch library costs, that equals the total county costs. However, at the bottom of the budget, you can see the things that are being contributed in order to bring that number down. So there's a full amount of what library service in the county actually costs. Minus the city levees. So we're asking one thirty seven two hundred from Bemidji and sixteen four eighty from Black Duck. Plus a Kichigami contribution to again, try to keep that levy down. And we're contributing about forty to five hundred. So that brings a reduced county total. That was how we brought. All of these increasing costs and still managed to keep that down to three percent for you this year. So that's that's the meat of it. That's the meat and potatoes. I do have a contact information on that last slide for myself, as well as for Branch Manager Sherry Gordon. And Kelly Hanks from our Black Duck Library. So. There's a lot of information that was sent in to Tom Berry, a lot of requests that you have made for, oh, five years budget expenditures, revenues, operating information. So at this point, I would love to field any questions you may have concerning that.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair. So Melissa, thanks for all the information here, and I think everybody really appreciates all that the libraries do for our communities, and that's never been in question. Question I had is why would we put out the message that. Fun that if we didn't fund at the the level that you requested, that it would immediately mean that services would be shut down in Black Duck or in Bemidji and. And that knowing that you have substantial amount of reserve funding, that you wouldn't have to shut down. So you're showing that you contributed forty two thousand five hundred when you have millions of dollars in reserve. Why wouldn't you be able to to contribute more to not shut down things?
Sure. So again, this is all part of a conversation that we are having. So the initial proposal that was. Put forth by the Board Committee and then by the Kichigami Board, kind of set the cap at three percent and then considered what they would do from there. So we generally look at our operations as what you've paid before seems like a reasonable amount to expect you to pay again. That can change, of course, which is why we want to open these conversations and have this communication. So the maintenance of effort, the MOE, FMR, whatever you want to call it, the minimum amount that is required by the state. Is the number that was responded back to us with. And I can understand that. That might be something that you would look at. Again, that's the number you sent an official letter from the state that says this is what you have to pay. But I do want to bring to your attention that that amount has not changed since twenty eleven. Not in matching with inflation, not in matching with actual library operational costs that was set in twenty eleven, and it hasn't changed since then. So I think that's an important thing to note, is that that number has been sent to you in a letter for more than a decade now, while the cost of library operations have continued to go up. So I think that's an important consideration there. We do have some reserves at the library. That's something that had built up over time. We kind of identified it in an audit process and discovered that it was perhaps a little higher than we would like. And we are working to reduce that amount through responsible spending. So. One way that we've put together, and I think I said this information to you, is a way to try to get that back to the cities in the form of capital appropriations. So there has been more than a million dollars set aside that cities are able to request. In order to make improvements to their facilities. So that's really going to save them some money and not having to make those. Capital improvements themselves over the next few years. And we've been working with the Branch Manager as well as the Kichigami City Representative. To make sure that those funds are well spent within this community. Kind of the levy request is the way that we thought of to. Try to get that money back to counties, right? So we figured out a way to get that money back to cities through those capital appropriations, and now we are working with the remaining funds to try to do levy buy down to keep those costs reasonable to you. So when we received the message that they were considering going down to the state minimum, a thirty five percent decrease. It really was very concerning. So as we had mentioned in the in the budget policy. Things that aren't paid by the cities that aren't paid by the counties. The normal operation is to then figure out, well, how are we going to make this happen? And the normal order of operations has been what services are we going to have to cost? So it's possible that we could take it back to the board and say they're going with a very, very low amount. They're going with the state minimum this year. This is what they're willing to provide. And they may come up with another plan based on that. But the way that I operate and the principles that I must operate under come from the Joint Powers Agreement and then the budgeting policy. So because it's stated that way in the budget policy, that was my next look at what I could do. So.
Thank you. The. You mentioned about some of the the state required minimum. Why does Crow Wing only pay the state required minimum? And it looks like they have for several years. Can you explain? Why they are different? And some of the some of the ones on our report here show that that there are cities that are paying less than the state required minimum and.
One thing that I would like to point out, I saw that information in in Tom's presentation, and thank you very much for all the information that was given there. One thing to mention is that the. Maintenance of effort that is reported from the counties and from the city, it varies from the amount that we request in the levy. So cities actually pay for all of the operations costs of the library facility. They own the facility. They pay for the insurance. They pay for the snow removal. They pay for. All of those kinds of things within their own cities. So city maintenance of effort, it's actually quite a bit different. So for example, for Bemidji in twenty twenty one. We asked for almost a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. They actually paid over two hundred and one thousand dollars. Because some of that was in-kind cost for what they were paying to operate that facility. So that was included in the KRLF MOE twenty twenty one document that had been sent to you. So a lot of times the counties pay pretty close to the minimum, sometimes higher than. But again, all of that has kind of been. Historically built up, you know, so Crow Wing County, I think that they've been paying the minimum since the minimum was set. They also only have one library within their system. It's a little different there.
Could I, if I could add some context to that as well, Melissa, thank you, Mr. Chair, that I think that. That points out kind of the arbitrary nature of that legislation. It's it's really some poor legislation. They they said in twenty eleven, we're gonna, we're gonna take twenty two thousand and nine and say ninety percent of whatever you paid. That's your minimum. So I don't know what the reason was, but you know, Crow Wing County has, yeah, as Melissa said, has one library, we have two. Why there's that disparity, but their minimum, their MME or whatever is five oh nine, whereas ours is what, I'm sorry, two eighty six or some two sixty, two sixty five? We pretty much run. We have very similar circulation. In fact, Bemidji circulation, I think since COVID is a little bit higher than Brainerd. I think historically, Brainerd's. Circulation is slightly higher than ours. But there there must have been something in two thousand and nine, I don't know what it is, that caused. Brainerd to or Crow Wing to pay that quite large amount, and then they got locked into it because of. What I really see is arbitrary legislature or legislation that grabbed onto an arbitrary number. So I don't. It's unfortunate that the state sends that and that notice out to to local government units because. It makes us think like, oh, well, that's the bill. That's what we should be paying. And there's really nothing behind that number.
Well, the original was based on things like, you know, your property tax assessment, your number of residents. It was it was based on a very complex formula. And then it just became ninety percent. So think of how much Beltrami County has changed from that time to this time. And how we are still trying to serve that growing number of residents, that changing population with that same exact MOE. So costs have gone up. Information has changed. I mean, the modern library has changed a lot in the last decade, like. Ten years ago, people weren't necessarily coming to us for all of their public computer use needs, but now we really do see that. So think of all the things that have changed since twenty eleven and then consider that that number has not changed, not even the magic.
And that's similar to our predicament with seventy five percent of our property not being taxable and a huge portion of that being from pilt property. And that hasn't changed in thirty, forty, fifty years. We have not gotten any more funding either. So we're in the same kind of boat that way. You know, the state, the state doesn't keep up with the times on the inflationary costs, especially now with inflation that we're dealing with. And and so. Certainly understand that. Just it's a seems, you know, with a, you know, fifty four percent more that are with us being a second poorest county in Minnesota for us to be paying. You know, carrying the water, so to speak, for other other counties and cities that just. Doesn't seem like it's reasonable for us to be paying as much as we are. um, doesn't seem like it's reasonable for us to be paying as much as we are.
I think that, um, all of the costs that are paid by cities operate the city libraries, all of the costs that are paid by your county operate those county libraries. So the, the way that we split out any of the shared resources, like the E resources, um, and the shared collections, we do send large print collections and audio collection rotating around. Um, it's all kind of based on the percentage you've used. So really the money that you are spending, it isn't going towards other counties and other cities. We operate as a region, but these budgets are very specific in the way that those funds get spent. So really what we are requesting from you guys is the money that's going toward your.
From what I looked, looked at, it looked like there was actually around a couple hundred thousand of, of extra of that money that you have collected from the counties. Um, and, and that's what's probably gone towards building that reserve up over time. And so that was another reason why I thought it was reasonable for us to say, hey, can we get kind of a pass this year with our exceptional budget situation and use some of that reserve funding to help, um, that we've I don't know if you want to call overpaid over, over the last many years, um, to, to help us out this year. And that's, that's what we were looking at. If that's not feasible for some reason, um, obviously you saw that Tom has the, the, uh, the higher amount. It's last, this current year's amount, not the requested amount. So that twelve thousand two hundred two dollars, I think is what it equates to, um, that we expected that that. You know, if you're looking to spend down the reserves, you should be able to come up with that extra twelve thousand two hundred two dollars to, to, to not actually, actually ask for an increase. If you're looking to spend down the reserves.
Well, because we do speak to nine different cities and five different counties. You know, it is important that we try to spend this money in a way that is as equitable as possible across the board. So I can certainly bring that back to the Kichigami Board. I can certainly bring that request back. Um, but again, being one of the fourteen entities represented by that board, it's hard to estimate how they might take that one day might be able to offer. So especially given the amount that we are already contributing to try to keep that levy down, you know?
Mr. Chair, if, if I could, as, as again, I'm, I'm sorry, Craig, I, I, just because I'm on the, I'm on the committee, I just want to respond as well. I, and I don't want, um, Melissa to feel like she has to speak for the board. Um, um, I, I, I've been on the board for six years. Um, we identified this, um, uh, the, the budget surpluses or the reserves that we had probably about four years ago and we, well, maybe a little bit less than that, but we spent a good two years like arguing and discussing and being very deliberate about what we're going to do with this. And now these funds have taken about a decade to accrue. Uh, the bulk of it is because we have been funding for one hundred percent employment. And that's not always the case. Uh, someone quits, it takes a month or two to fill that vacancy. Say we have someone that's been on the payroll for fifteen years and they quit and are replaced with a new worker. Um, so you've got that six week gap of no employee and then you're hiring someone at a lower level than, than the person that left. And, uh, and so, um, unchecked those, those, um, uh, reserves grew. Um, we, again, we took about ten years to create this problem, I would say, and we're not gonna spend it down overnight. You know, um, we, I think, set up some very responsible ways of buying it down. Again, the capital improvement program to make sure that cities will be able to lower their levies by, uh, being able to draw on that account for, um, ca- any sort of capital improvement, a boiler, a new roof, parking lot, uh, being redone or something. And, um, and then for the cit, for the counties over time, and this is forty two thousand dollars. We have, uh, I forget the, the, the Black Duck, but the belt, the Bemidji, um, s- budget surplus is around four hundred and some four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the Black Duck is around sixty five thousand dollars. So here, this year, we're throwing about a tenth of that back at the county. So it took us ten years to build it up and now we've got a fund that will spend ten years buying down. Um, I think that's responsible. I think we worked really, really hard, uh, to come up with that arrangement and it was, it was not easy. We had a lot of differences in opinion on the board and that's why it took us, I don't know, eighteen months or two years to figure out exactly how we were going to draw it down. Um, I, I, I am our representative, the Bemidji or the Beltrami County Board's representative on the K R L S Board. I'm also on the Budget Committee. This is my budget that we submitted to the Beltrami County Board. Um, I would hope that you have some faith in me, uh, and my colleagues on the K R L S Board to responsibly handle this, this problem. And I, I feel, I, I don't want to be disrespectful, but I feel like this is a little bit of armchair quarterbacking of you now, the, the, the Beltrami Budget Committee telling Kitchy how we should deal with our funds, you know, and yes, there was an overage, but once that money hits our ledger, it is our money K R L S and it's up to K R L S to decide what to do with that money. We are also looking at some major increases in labor costs because we are, are unionizing. And I, I think our employees at K R L S now are asking for the same sort of um, job place safeties and, and, uh, representation that we offer our municipal liquor store employees or, um, our, our county employees that work in the street department or the, the human services department. And so by cutting our budget right now, just as Beltrami County is having a very difficult year, um, cutting our budget is going to make it very difficult for us to negotiate this contract. And it will, I, I don't see how we can do the bulk of the money that gets paid to K R L S by the county goes to labor costs. How are we going to be able to move forward as a library, as two branch libraries without cutting jobs? You know, these are finally getting to where they're good paying jobs. We have great people in our library, our branch libraries, working very hard in challenging circumstances. And now that they're finally getting to the point where they're going to get paid what they deserve, where they're going to have the benefits that they deserve. And we're going to start cutting jobs. And I think that that is really a shame. The, the impact on the budget for the li, for the county, we have a hundred million dollar budget. And we're going to punish K R L S by not giving them the three percent increase that they desperately need to make a point that I'm not sure even what it is. Um, we are buying down those reserves. We are being incredibly responsible. And I think that the numbers that Melissa showed us, you can see that the Bemidji Library serves many more people than just the residents of Bemidji. People come to our life, branch library from all over the county. We already in the last ten years got rid of the bookmobile for reasons that I've never fully understood. We're being a poor rural county, our library is so important to us. Our bookmobile was so important to us and for to save twenty thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars a year, we eliminated at some point before I got on the board. It's always been my goal to reestablish the bookmobile in, in Beltrami County. Um, I failed to do that because, uh, one reason or another, and you know, as I'm trying to grow the budget, my colleagues are looking at cutting it. Um, so I'm, I'm dismayed and, um, upset. I have been saying to people as they email us that I will only support the three percent increase that we originally requested. I don't know how to do that now. Because apparently we are only going to have the option of the twenty twenty two spending levels or revert back to the M M E, both of which I think are unacceptable. So I'm in a bit of a pickle to figure out how to move forward on this. Um, because I think it's a shame that we are going to make these, these really unnecessary cuts. I mean, if we're looking at tightening our belt, I would like to see what other departments, um, in our county where we are going to be looking at laying off workers to reduce their annual budget by three percent. I don't think that exists. And so I think it's unfair that, to pick on K R L S. Um, so, um, that's my, that's my very lengthy, lengthy, uh, 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 bit. And I've got more to say, but I'll, I'll keep my mouth shut. Cause I'll just talk forever. Um, so thank you.
Well, thank you for providing some of that historical perspective. Again, I've been here since January, so I know that Commissioner Olson have a little bit more of a long ranging perspective on how we got here and the things that have been done to try to correct this problem. You know, I'm kind of digging through the old budget like an archaeological dig, figuring out what happened and why. Um, and thank you very much also for mentioning the bookmobile. You had also asked how come reductions from the county levy are going to immediately be felt by the branch libraries? Um, and that's because eight hundred and fifty dollars of that budget request goes towards being a dissipant on our board and every single other penny of that cost is in the, in the branch budget. So we really look at how the branch operations cost. Um, we take out the city levies from that and then the remainder is what goes on the county. So there's really not a lot of room to cut other than cutting the branches. So.
Commissioner Anderson. The board give you the additional money instead of just forty two thousand five hundred, they could give you the extra twelve thousand two hundred two dollars out of the reserve funds, which, as you, you know, wouldn't be that big of an ass.
Which, which then is going to take away from the money we're going to give back in nine and a half years. So, I mean, that money will eventually come back. And, and I hesitate to use one-time dollars to buy down ongoing expenses. I mean, we're talking about ongoing labor and expenses that will increase, just like our, our county uh, uh, labor costs increase every year, two to three to four percent. Um, so if we're spending down our levy request this year and say we do then, the K R L S then does take that twelve thousand dollars, now that's, uh, my math isn't going to be sharp enough to, to come up with the money, the dot, the numbers, but whatever percentage that is of the, of the whole, that's like, uh, a quarter percent or something like that. So, um, there's a quarter percent plus the, the, um, the one percent or so that's the forty two. Um, so then next year, we're going to have to ask for that money again. And then you can say, oh my gosh, you know, you just asked, you, 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 now you're asking for not the three percent, but actually a four and a half percent. Didn't we just talk to you guys last year about living within your means? You know, and so we're, we're basically putting off inevitable increases in the budget. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't buy down the cost too much of any one year. We should be spreading it over time so that it's a softer hit on, on our budget, long term.
Like Commissioner Olson, you, I believe there's an email that came out saying that there's going to be like four hundred and some thousand dollars in furniture that we're going to repurchase with the reserve funds and that, you know, if you don't, don't buy quite as much furniture then.
I don't know what, I don't know where that, if that's one of the other branch libraries.
Our Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Anderson has, uh, some comments or questions.
I, I definitely support the library and, and, and always has since being elected. The question I have is with Brainerd, are they able to staff their library with what they need because they're meeting the minimum amount from the state, which is a lot larger than ours? And is that why we need to contribute more from the county level? You know, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure if they're not giving extra how they can keep their building staffed and, and move forward.
Well, okay, say that, say that again. I'm not sure that I'm understanding your point.
I can answer.
Okay.
I, I can answer that question. It's because the M M E, the minimum maintenance of effort is a meaningless number. The.
But they're paying a whole lot more than we are.
Crow Wing, yes, right. The Crow Wing County is paying five oh nine a year. Brainerd, I forget what they pay, but it's, it's probably a lot less than what, um, than what Bemidji pays.
Actual reported amounts, they're paying about a hundred and thirty.
Yeah. So you put those two numbers together, the county and the city together, and it's enough to function, to, to, to fund the library. So my guess, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember off the top of my head, but my guess is that Bemidji pays more than Brainerd does. And Bemidji, uh, Beltrami pays less than Crow Wing, but, but the two, our two Ls you use, the Bemidji and, and, and and Bemid, Bemidji and Beltrami, too many Bs here. Um, Bemidji and Beltrami together is enough to fund our two branch libraries and, and Black Duck and then Brainerd and Crow Wing together is enough to fund. Um, but looking at whether you're paying more or less than what the state said at the, at, as the minimum maintenance of effort is, is not going to get you very far. Cause what really it comes down to is not what the state decided in two thousand and eleven, but what is today the actual cost of funding your branch library? And those other numbers are really meaningless. Um, and, and I really wish that the state would, would re, um, would, would rewrite that legislation uh, to be more, um, uh, um, relevant to, to the, to the real world.
Yeah, cause it is. It's just, it's ninety percent of what it was set in two thousand and eleven and that's, that's what it is. That's what it's been. So, I mean, librarians are very good at finding creative ways to try to work with the funds that were given. Um, but yes, you are correct. You are correct that, uh, Brainerd can pay a little bit less because Crow Wing County is paying quite a bit. Even though it is their minimum, they were paying quite a bit in two thousand and eleven too. So yeah, that's kind of the difference there. It's just, what was it in two thousand and eleven? A snapshot of the past? And that snapshot has grown more and more and more out of focus as we've moved a decade away and we'll see our actual costs.
But what I really see change this year, it sounds like the committee has been working on the budget in a whole more open fashion than when I was on the board. Cause when I was on the board, it was, uh, like pulling teeth to try to get any information from our director or the people involved. And so it sounds to me like we're in a different era now. And I really appreciate that, Melissa, that you know, you put, you put it out there, this is where we are and this is what we're trying to do. And, and I would like us to fund it appropriately for this year. And then I think we'd have responsibility to work through whoever's going to be representing, uh, Kitchy, uh, working through the budget so that next year it's, um, where you, when you come to Bemidji, uh, to visit a bu, to our budget committee, um, it's not with all kinds of tension. It's, it's, this is the way we see it. How do you see it type thing is back and forth.
Yeah, certainly clear, open communication and a healthy conversation on the ways in which we can all work together to improve the resource information life of your citizens is the goal. That's why we exist as an organization. That's why we all decided to sign onto the joint powers agreement and come together to fund this, expand this operation and try to make these great things happen.
Right. Because as a joint powers, we have one vote and all the others have a vote. So we can't just go charging in and say, we're going to change this. It has to be worked out, uh, you know, compromise with other.
The whole point of getting together in the first place, you know, I look back through these policies and I look back through the joint powers agreement and the goal is shared efficiencies in order to operate and give them the best, absolute best information resources that we can. But you always have to keep those costs in mind. We're taxpayer funded. You always have to consider how you're impacting your citizens. So.
A number of the taxpayers that I visited with, um, said if we had to increase taxes, we still want to maintain our, our library. So, uh, they see the value. It's not just for one segment of society. All of us use it.
Yeah. And I don't know the last time that, um, you know, any particular commissioner has come in and seen the library, but I would definitely encourage you to come by, get a library card. There's a lot of things that we offer that aren't, you know, necessarily the historically thought of. It's a room full of books, right? We really offer so much more to our citizens now than, than perhaps, you know, people think of from the music man or wherever their stereotypes may come from. Very, very nice resources.
And I come in and bug Sherry every once in a while. So.
See that information goes through her to me. So I.
Sure.
And always feel free to contact me as well. I mean, my.
You hear that now, Sherry?
Contact me. I'm happy to have these conversations with you and try to reach our mutual goals. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. All right. So, um, I got a list of, uh, questions and comments and now first, uh, I want to thank you for, for coming to, uh, give us an, an update and presentation. So with that being said, uh, one of your slides, you, you, you mentioned that cities and colonies will have uh, have the opportunity to suggest changes to service levels in order to adjust the levy request. So what happens if a colony does suggest, uh, an adjustment to the levy request?
Sure. Um, so actually probably the, the clearest example of this would be from two thousand and eleven. So, uh, during two thousand and eleven, the director actually had to put together a report for just about every single county in our system. Um, because they set that maintenance of effort where it was. Uh, so a lot of them contacted us to say, listen, we're going down to the minimum. How are you going to do it? So really the next step from here would be for the director to work with the branch managers. Um, and we try to find a couple of different options that we can present to you. So I know in two thousand and eleven, when they were making those cuts, they presented some options that showed, um, shutting down the bookmobile locations and showed you the cost savings that may come from that. Um, they've also put together proposals that said, okay, well, what if we took one of our libraries and we cut a day? How much would that save you in the county? What if we looked at our library, then we cut evening hours? How much would that save you in the county? Um, so we kind of put together some different upper, uh, options for you to take a look at. Um, I think even from there, the, the decision will have to be kind of made mutually. The Kichigami Board would have to look at some operations as well. Um, but that's kind of where you go from there. If you want to.
So there was, there, in the past, there was, uh, proposals for budget cuts.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. If we have like minor cuts, uh, I would say even just when I came in January and there was one or two cities that wanted to pay a little bit less than we had requested.
So, so what, what's different now than what happened or the proposal is in the past? Uh, you mentioned, you know, you, uh, did some presentations and, and prepared, you know, uh, books for, for uh, the participating, uh, counties and things like that. Um, you know, I, I think that would have been helpful this past month. Um, because getting all, all these, these letters, emails and phone calls. And, um, how are we supposed to respond? You know, uh, you know, a Facebook post by, uh, uh, an employee. You know, uh, you know, Facebook post by uh, uh, an employee, you know. Um, suggesting that I don't know what it's like or suggesting that, you know, I don't understand. When people have to make choices between putting food on the table and, and whatnot is very concerning. So what, what happened? Where, where's the breakdown? Why, why couldn't you come to the board uh rather than, than uh Facebook? Or, or other social media um avenues? Uh, you, you mentioned you wanna have clear communication. Um, our administrator emailed you twice uh with no response. And to me, that, that's not clear communication. All the communication that I received is from the public. So if you can, in this letter, it says, a well-known source stated that it could close. The Black Duck Library altogether if we did not fully fund. The request. Is that true?
It's a possibility.
Is it true?
That's a thirty-five percent cut and Black Duck does not have a very large operational budget. So when we take a look at that and we try to decide how can we make this happen with a thirty-five percent cut? When you're looking at materials and personnel and operational cuts, like, that's a huge amount and that's a small library. That's a large percentage for them. So when we were taking a look at options, we looked at personnel, we looked at buildings, we looked at a lot of different things. Usually when we did the, so in twenty-eleven, when that process happened, I think that that happened after we got final numbers back from the counties to say. This is what we will fund. So we presented those options a little bit later in our budget cycle.
And, and like I said, you know, communication would have been nice.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm, I'm not sure that that's accurate to say that Melissa has not been in communication with Mr. Barry. Melissa and I have been talking more than weekly on trying to figure out what information um is, has been requested and.
I didn't receive anything till uh maybe a few weeks ago. So, I mean, again, you know, there, there wasn't no clear communication.
Uh, and I, I would also, Exhibit A is their presence here today. Um, I mean, they are trying to get the information. Part of this might be my fault. I mean, I could have given more information in, in um, in past meetings, but to. To throw that on Melissa, I think is unfair and also she can't control what people. Ask you or me or anyone else or what staff, individual staff members do on their, I mean, they're, they have the right to, to say what they want. And not everything that every employee has said is um, is speaking on behalf of KRLS or, or at the. Behest of, of Melissa by any means.
But they certainly could, can, they could control the narrative to say that we do have reserve funds and we will work with the county to make sure that we don't. Shut down Black Duck Library, things like that. It certainly could be spun in a more positive way. Instead of making a lot of constituents, you know, upset thinking that things were gonna be, you know, the sky is falling type of an attitude and that's, I think, but. Yeah, maybe Commissioner Sumner, maybe that's what you were gonna getting to as well. I, I just don't, I don't like the approach that was taken. Um, instead of communicating with us and saying, hey, how can we work together to make sure this doesn't happen? Um, you know, it, it was just like, oh, if we just get a whole bunch of people to, to contact the commissioners, uh, you know, and say how much they love the library and. And actually, yeah, talk to us like we don't know what a library is. I mean, it's just, um, I, I think it could have been approached differently.
You know, you mentioned, you know, create community, community connections and I, I, I do appreciate, you know, our, our, our residents and our constituents, you know, reaching out. You know, I will never turn, turn away an opportunity to listen to their concerns. Um, you know, but the way that it was brought about is, is very concerning. Um, you know. Uh, you know, uh, Sherry, you know, reached out to the Leech Lake Band. I, I honestly believe that Sherry, you could have reached out to myself as a commissioner and we could have had some communications. But uh, that wasn't the case. Um, you know. A lot of things that I heard was, was, you know, well, we gotta, you know, we gotta uh provide shelter and, and warmth and, and. A cooling place for, for our homeless. So. You know. I, I, I agree, you know, we have a lot of social issues here, you know, in Beltrami County, you know, being, you know, second poorest county, you know, in the state. So, you know, what, what, what if we, we did the minimum maintenance and use that uh, um. Hundred and, hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, to go towards, you know, providing uh grants for, for the homeless. And as far as I know, our, our community center, you know, does uh allow for, for residents to, to go. And utilize their, their space to do um. Job search, uh, use the internet, computers, things like that. So, I mean, there are other, other, you know. Community places that, that folks can go to. So, you know, it's. You know, you mentioned, uh, you know, uh, Commissioner Olson, you asked what other departments are doing, you know. Uh, the community, uh, the Health and Human Services um cut two hundred thousand dollars, you know, part of, part of their efforts to try to help us. Uh, uh, decrease the levy. Um, but I, I doubt you, you're hearing from, from. Uh, the department head or the staff on, on how they're gonna have to uh figure out a way to adjust the.
So they're gonna be?
I, I'm not too sure.
I think it's zero.
Well, you know, I mean, I, I think we have a responsibility, um, you know, to, to manage our, our taxpayers' money and, and. In a way that um is fair, fair to all.
We have, we have heard overwhelmingly from the taxpayers themselves that they do not wanna see cuts to the library. And furthermore, we, again, we sent a letter to KRLS saying we are anticipating cutting. Our contribution by thirty-five percent. And now we're saying that they should have spun it better for us. To give us political cover over the cuts that we are proposing and that's.
Who's responsible for, for overseeing uh the Bemidji uh library or the Black Duck Library? Is it the Beltrami County Board or is it the KRLS Board?
It's the KRLS Board, it's the Bemidji Library, Branch Library Board. It's at, at the end, it's the, the, it's the.
So, so why, why couldn't anybody come to, come to the board and, and, and say, you know, we, we understand that you're proposing, you know, this, this cut? Where was the communication? It seemed like it was all put on, on the budget committee, the Beltrami County Board, when, when this organization has an independent board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I, I think that this has been a, a lesson, you know, for a lot of us. As far as making sure that when we talk budget, that we have all the players there and. And I'm sure Melissa is, is listening so that next year uh we'll be at the table speaking. As to uh what, what the needs are and what can be done with the reserve. Uh, I think now we, we just uh need to move forward with deciding as a board. Uh, which, which of those options we're going to use so that uh we can uh. We've used a lot of their time as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, but I do have one, one more question. Um, in an email that I received, it said that. That KRLS cannot use reserves for general operation or staff salaries. Is that true?
What, what was that part? That we cannot use it for?
For, for general operations and staff salaries.
Um, I think that we can use those for what the board chooses to use them for. I mean, they set some aside for capital appropriations. They set some aside for operating a mobile library. Um, so.
So how much is, how much is, how much is uh remaining in the reserves?
Uh, let's see, so the numbers that I have sent to you all. All right, so kind of looking at our designated ones, um, you're looking at about one point five million. We do have a little bit more when you just look at it through our general fund. Sorry, give me one second, I'll pull that information up. I think all told, you're looking at about four point six.
Four point six and, and one point five is uh. Is designated. So then it, then it wouldn't be fair to say that the, the board or, or the, the reserves cannot be used for general operations.
Well, and we have, they said that they wanted to have about one point nine of that as the carryover for our six-month operations. Um, so that's kind of the, the number that we're trying to get down to.
And indeed, the forty-two five, the forty-two thousand five hundred dollars that, that the, we're contributing, KRLS is contributing from its reserves. To buy down the request from uh, from Beltrami County is, is going to operational costs. So we are, I mean, that's, we are. Gonna be spending year after year about, I, I'm just gonna guess that it's like that forty to fifty thousand dollars a year for about a decade. Buying down the reserves that are specifically um attributed to overbudgeting at the Bemidji Library Branch. And then, and then the commensurate amount over at, at uh the Black Duck Branch.
All right, so I guess there was, I, I'm not too sure where this individual got, got his information from, but um, you know. I guess I'm, I'm trying to set the, the record straight and get, get as much information as I can because, I mean. You know, this past month has been very difficult to try to answer um questions from, from our constituents on, on, you know. Um, whether this will, will close the library or not, or how this is gonna impact, you know, services. I, I'm still unsure. Um. But, but I hope that this is an opportunity for us to, to really uh figure out a, a way to communicate with each other, you know, without. Um, you know, going to social media or, or other avenues. I mean, I, I think uh. Um, it's important that, that we understand each other when uh we all, we wanna help each other.
Mr. Chair, I, I just like to point out that if regardless of what the board decides to do, if, if it's a funding cut or not. It would still be the library board and the library system that would choose themselves. If they were to shut something down, cause they do have the funding available to not shut anything down. And that, and you did mention, um, Reed, I believe you said that, that Black Duck has sixty, roughly sixty-five thousand, I think you just said. And Bemidji has roughly four hundred and twenty thousand in reserves. So they, they certainly, yes, you plan on spending it down over ten years, but. It is the choice to spend it down over ten years instead of potentially using it this year to keep everything status quo and not shut down.
Uh, Black Duck was looking at.
Specifically for capital appropriation.
Yeah.
Dollar amounts mentioned, those have been set aside for the board and they're kind of committed to that already.
And Black Duck is looking at purchasing a new building to expand their library and they were gonna be taking that full sixty-five to be able to move into a better space. And this will absolutely kneecap any hopes of, of being able to move into a better space if not. Really be a, an existential threat to the branch. And that's not hyperbole.
Oh, you know, and, and talking to the, to the city and uh administrator up there, I mean, I guess, like I said, you know, all the in, information that we're getting is. Is, is this all we're solving it?
But letters from the public is not information. It's letters from the, I mean, they're not speaking from a position of authority. They're speaking from a position of concern and they may get some things wrong. Because, because there isn't a whole lot of understanding maybe of what's going on. So I don't think we should be looking at the letters of concern as, as like factual. This is what's gonna happen. I mean, you may get thirty-five percent cut.
But that's what they're doing though.
Who is they?
The letters that we're receiving, it, it's, it's like, it's all factual.
Could I, could I just ask a question that is made, made sense to me to ask at this point, Melissa? This excess money, this reserve, who can, who makes that final decision? Is it yourself? Is it the rep from Beltrami County? Uh, who makes that decision whether it's used for? Uh, supplies or, sure.
Yeah, so the final decision is from the Kichigami Regional Library Board. Um, so one of the things that I sent y'all.
So it, it's all, it's all the, it's all the board. It's not just one representative.
Hundred percent. No, it's the full board. And so uh we actually just had this come up with a Black Duck uh at, at the very last one where they. Bring to us kind of a proposal usually from the local board, but then also in communication with the city to say we've identified these needs. Um, these are things that we would like to do as a capital appropriation and will Kichigami support that and release those funds. So we've actually already released some to Pine River, to Parker Rapids and to Brainerd based on capital appropriations requests that they've made. Um, and it kind of, the policy sets out the directives. You have to show us the project estimates on the project and then at the end kind of bring us a report that says. This is how that project has benefited us. So it is not me. It is not any one individual representative. It is the full Kichigami Board that votes on those at our. Open board meetings.
And, and I guess Commissioner Gosbick, that's, that was my take on it is it's the full board. And we can't just go in and request and expect to get what we're requesting because it has to go through the board to say a or n.
Mr. Olson would have to go back to them and say, hey, the, the three percent didn't fly. They, they went with last year's number. So can I get approval to get that extra twelve thousand two hundred and two dollars so that we don't have any, any loss of funding this year? That's what.
Right, and, and that's, that's what I just wanted to make, make sure the public's clear on that.
And the three point five plus million that I saw in the budget committee on the general reserve would be where I would assume that money would come from.
Right, and then, but then just, I mean, just to be clear, if, if that's the avenue that we had to go down, now I'm asking. Representing the county, the Beltrami County Board, I'm asking Kichigami to make a special exception for one local government unit. Out of the fourteen uh participating uh local government units and.
Told us that some people did that earlier this year.
They did. No, we have a capital, we have a capital improvement fund.
No, she said that they, there were some other, other entities that asked for, or we're gonna do a reduction in how much they were gonna contribute.
No, yeah, it was capital. Brainerd, Pine River and uh, and, and Black Duck um are, are looking at. At capital improvement programs that we, and we already okayed, I forget, I, I forget what they were for, for Brainerd uh and, and Pine River, but we already. Okayed that. Wadena just built a new library and I wouldn't, I would be surprised if they didn't come to us with something. To help outfit their new building uh in the very near future. Um, so, and I think that Bemidji just put on a new roof. Or, or bought a new boiler, a camera, which, and a couple of years ago, and it would have been an ideal use for that fund had, had it not been done before the fund was created.
Always facility needs. We've, we've got a lot of things we wanna do, you know, so, yeah, absolutely. It's, it's kind of a separate pile of money. There was that amount put aside, which is what they're requesting off of. They were each given a designated amount of money for that. Um, so it's just a slightly different.
And I probably missed, I, I probably uh conflated the two at one point talking today, so I apologize for that. I think that's what I did.
Okay.
But yeah, I will speak to the chair. Thank you so much for your feedback on the communication process. I agree with you. We absolutely need to be working together and. Make it a more clear process, get together earlier in the process so that we can have those conversations. I was very glad you for reaching out to me so you could have that phone conversation early on. I'm glad for you to reach out so that I could give you all the documentation that you needed um after that request. Um, so, yeah. Thank you very much for having us here today. I appreciate the, the chance to give you more information about Kichigami. It's kind of a. Large, complicated beast, so it's, it's important to make sure that I get out to all of the people who participate, all of the people who I send budgets, you know, if there's. Money flowing down the line, I really think that communication needs to flow down that same line to make sure we are on the same page. So. I really thank you for this opportunity and wanna make sure and let you know that my door is open. You can call me, you can email me. I'm happy to field your responses.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the jail finance committee presentation and we. Have a half, half an hour. Is, is that gonna be enough time?
I can start. Well, uh, depends. I can move the administrator's report if you'd like, and we can also check in with Mr. Kimmel and see how much time he might need.
Either one works.
Okay. Uh, let's see. I think we had him scheduled for twenty-five minutes and so that would take us to about fifty.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll move your report to.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so members of the commission, I just wanna introduce Mr. Bruce Kimmel from Ellers. He, the Ellers um municipal finance is part of the um construction engineers team. And has been working with the county uh through the finance committee or subcommittee, I should say, to talk about various funding options. And financing scenarios, looking at bond and interest and affordability uh scenarios and, and the such. And uh, you know, since we had, and, and that work has actually been taking place since about the start of the feasibility needs assessment. So while we have been running the feasibility and needs assessment totally sort of irrespective of the financial costs, other than, of course, we have to look at what those would, would cost. Uh, we're looking through the finance team about how to finance those costs. So that's what the work of this particular team has done. Uh, we have a number of different uh community members as well as uh members from the county uh on this particular finance team. Uh, including, uh, Commissioner Gosbig, uh, Jarrett Walton from the sheriff's office, uh, the auditor treasurer, the county finance director. Uh, myself and then, uh, two financial professionals, Ryan Welly and Glenn Lynseth. Um, but representing the group today with some preliminary information regarding funding and financing options is, uh, uh, Bruce Kimmel. And I'll turn it over to him to, uh, continue with his presentation. Bruce, can you hear us? Okay.
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, that sounds great. Thank you.
Great. I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen if I can here. All right. And can you all see that?
Yeah. Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good. Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Bruce Kimmel with Ellers. Um, it's really been a pleasure to work with the CE team. And to be, uh, engaging with your jail finance committee over the last several months. I wanted to provide, um, largely the information that I provided to the committee, uh, back at the end of, uh, July. But also with a few additional pages of information. Um, I won't go through all of it in depth. It's, it's quite a lot. But please stop me along the way. Uh, if you have questions, I want to make sure that you all, uh, as the ultimate decision makers are understanding where we're coming from. In terms of this debt projection methodology, um, and you know, whatever additional information you'd like to see from us. That we're providing that to you after this meeting. So, um, really look forward to, you know, y- your questions and, and, and feedback. On what, what else would be helpful for you as you go forward. So, um, this, the jail projections that we did didn't pertain or correlate exactly with the, um, cost estimates. And information that was provided by justice planners, but it is in this largely the same range. And so I think you should be able to, um, you know, extrapolate pretty easily from what we did to what, uh, justice partners did. Um, in terms of their cost estimates and their estimates of the, of the, uh, debt levy or, or debt service requirement. But what we did is we ran a range of three scenarios, um, assuming jail costs ranging from sixty million dollars up to a hundred million dollars. For each of those scenarios, we assumed that you would pay that back over five years, uh, excuse me, that would be a, a big lift. Twenty-five years, uh, in twenty twenty-six through twenty fifty, we took current market bond rates plus fifty basis points or point five percent. And originally commissioners, we had thought about trying to wrap your existing debt service or wrapping the new debt service around your existing debt service. But really you'll have very, very little left, um, in twenty twenty-six and really just one payment left. On two hundred and twenty-seven. So it really didn't make sense to try to come up with something really elaborate in terms of wrapping. Because your remaining debt service is falling off rather quickly between now and, and twenty twenty fiscal twenty twenty-six. The numbers I sir wanted to imprint with you because you'll be seeing them later is the average annual debt service. Um, and you can see that for the sixty million dollar project scenario, it's about four point one million. It's about five point four million for the eighty million dollar scenario and six point eight million for the hundred million dollar scenario. So you know, between roughly seven or four million and seven million dollars over twenty-five years. Um, and, and you know, of course we can, we can rerun numbers, uh, correlating specifically to the, the justice planners report. Although I understand that their numbers that they had in their report were largely doing the same from, from our numbers. So they should be pretty compatible. As you know, uh, we're looking at a number of, uh, funding sources, uh, on the table for repaying the jail debt. There's the estimated or possible half cent local option sales tax that would generate an estimate of four million dollars per year. Um, you, we are looking at taking a portion of the county's existing one point six million dollar debt levy. Um, you'd have about half million dollars start, uh, available starting next year, um, through twenty twenty-five. So you know, one point five million dollars total, if you were to accumulate that over the next three years. Um, and then you'd have more available in twenty-six and the full amount of capacity available in twenty-seven. Now, we also know that you've got other, um, plans for some of those monies and have already dedicated some of those monies. But I just wanted to sort of show you our analysis and how, um, you know, some of those numbers come together and, and. You could also of course look at different local option sales tax amounts as well. And then in the highest cost scenarios, you might be looking at a new debt levy in addition to some portion of the existing debt levy. Um, whether or not you would get to that kind of price range for a jail, I, I think is probably likely not. But we want, we did want to show you again that hundred million dollar, uh, scenario. One thing I wanted to note is, you know, and I'm sure, uh, Administrator Barry had shared this with you. It's really difficult to project what kind of revenues you'll receive over the next twenty-five years, much less the, the next five years. From your, uh, from a local option sales tax. You've seen that with your transportation sales tax revenues. Um, we're estimating four million dollars in, in revenues. I would think that regardless of economic cycles up and down, that number would grow with inflation and just as. You have more people in the county over time buying more things, but we've tried to be pretty conservative in our base case as to how much to expect from that. The thing I really wanted to stress in this section, uh, commissioners, is that if you want to use lost as a tool. Or have that on the table for the, for the county taxpayers and voters to decide. Um, it's really quite crucial that you look at getting legislative approval this coming winter, spring of, of twenty twenty-three. Um, as you're aware, the, the county, the legislature has failed, uh, to, to do a tax bill that included last year's, um, lost requests. Including from counties like Winona and, um, and I taska, no, I task got theirs, excuse me, but Carlton did not. And, um, they'll be under a lot of pressure to do, uh, finally get a tax bill passed this coming legislative year. And so to avoid, you know, future disruption or, or heartburn down the road, it, it really seems to make sense. That you'd get that legislative approval, uh, this spring, go to your voters next fall. And then you could start collecting as early as April of twenty twenty-four and start that ball, ball rolling. Even before you issue any debt towards this new jail project. Um, and then be up, you know, full speed, uh, once you have that jail project underway or the financing in the, in the jail project underway in twenty twenty-six. Um, I think that's pretty much why I wanted to cover, other than we do run a, a zero percent inflation scenario. As well as a two percent inflation scenario, um, which you'll see in a moment. Any questions on the, 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 uh, use of lost as one of the, the possible revenue sources?
So my, I guess my question with the last is, is it something that. That is likely to get approved, um, for, you know, for our.
For us. Yeah. Break question, um, Commissioner, and, and I would say absolutely yes, based on legislative approvals. Um, for again, I taska got theirs and then, um, Carlton and Winona, Winona were advanced. As was Rice. Um, and then they got stymied when the legislature couldn't figure out what they wanted to do with a larger tax bill last year. So all of those counties were approved, but then they, um. But then they got stuck just because they couldn't reach, uh, consensus on an omnibus tax bill last year. Or when I say last year, I mean this last legislative session in, in the spring of twenty twenty-two.
So what's, uh, last doesn't, doesn't get approved or, or gets stuck. And then where, where does that put us, uh, with our?
Yeah. Well, so, um, then you would really have to look at, uh, the affordability as you see it. Of, of putting it on the property tax levy alone. Um, I, I, I think, you know, as we'll show, that's, it's a, it's a. Heavier lift for property tax if you don't have lost in the picture, but it ultimately is your decision first as a board, right? Whether you want to make the ask to the legislature and then assuming they do approve and get a tax bill done, uh, in twenty twenty-three. Then you would go to your voters and ultimately the voters are the deciders on, on, you know, whether this is part of the funding package. And, and one thing I would also note is both, um, I taska and, 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 uh. Winona went forward and actually did bonds. I, I think Rice did as well. Yeah. Um, they all have done bonds. Assuming a hundred percent levy repayment and then have gone to the legislature after that to ask for. Lost authority or the ability to go to their voters. And you might think, well, gosh, isn't that? You know, they, they just sort of tipped their hand and they, if they approved the bonds just based on levy, how would the legislature approve? A, a, a sales tax for them and they did anyway. Um, and here you're not, you're not proposing to do that. You're proposing to go for legislative and voter approval first and then only issue bonds. You know, most likely in, in twenty-five or twenty-six or twenty-seven. And so you wouldn't, really wouldn't be putting the cart before the horse that way. But, um, you do have some flexibility and I would say the wild card really is when the leg, it's not so much getting approved yourself. Uh, by the appropriate committees, it's, it's getting, uh, omnibus tax bill passed and, and again, they'll need to, they'll really need to do that in twenty twenty-three. Because it's not just about these provisions. It's about, you know, hundreds of other tax provisions as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Bruce, hey, this is Craig. Um, I've heard, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm pretty sure that it's, uh. Um, and maybe Jody's here too. She might know the answer, but so say we get the, in the, the spring here with the current legislature. Um, we get it approved at the state and then we want to go to the voters in the fall. If it's the only thing that is on the ballot, I don't know that we're legally able to have it. On the ballot, uh, or have a separate special deal just for this, um, type of thing for a voter approved. Local option sales tax if we don't have a regular election happening. Do you know the answer to that? Uh, I'm just concerned about.
Yeah, I know.
Twenty twenty-three and then, and then in the fall of twenty twenty-three, we actually aren't able to bring it to the voters if we don't have a, a reason to have an election.
I, I've never heard that commissioner. Um, it's not to say it's not true, but I know that school districts very often. Go to their voters with, um, either operating referendum, uh, questions or, or, or. Bond, you know, capital referendum questions and they're the only things on the ballot and that, that is, is, is just fine. But I, I think I would have to dig into that or maybe Jody knows the answer, but I've never heard of that kind of, um, requirement to have other things on the ballot.
I got that from one of our legislators and, and so I'm just concerned about making sure that we. Met daughter eyes and cross our t's and know that that's the answer, Jody.
Yeah. It, it's not in the, it's not in the lost legislation. I can tell you that, um, you know, specifically about this. Um, county, uh, tax possibility and how you get it approved. I know that language is not in the. The, the chapter or the section per se, but it could be somewhere else.
I think it would be just in general election rules or laws that, uh, would be a matter of not being able for a county to not be able to have. Um, just a referendum type of question on the ballot if there isn't a regular election. I think that's the part that I'd want to get answered. So if you can jot that down to, to double check that or, or, or maybe Ben can. Um, and maybe Ben has, has checked it as well, but that's, uh, just something I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Yeah, I've, I've heard the same thing. So.
And, and I guess I would be curious as to why school districts could do that and not counties, but I'll, I'll check on that as well. And I know. I know the bond attorneys to talk to about that and to, um, get confirmation. So I'll get right on that commissioner.
If that was the case, then where would that put us? Um, if we can't, if we weren't able to, to go to the voters. In the fall of twenty-three, it's obviously too late to do it right now. Um, and does, you know, how does that affect our project then?
Uh, it really wouldn't affect your project. It would affect how soon you could start electing that sales tax. In, in order to build up a head of steam, if you will. Um, so if we could not go in November of twenty-three, we would have to look at. Going, uh, with the primary ballot at the earliest, the primary ballot, uh, in, I guess, the summer of twenty-four. Um, you know, being a presidential election year and you could do it then, or you could do it with the general election in twenty twenty-four. But, um, but then, you know, you could still be proceeding apace because we're not looking at doing the bonds until twenty twenty-five. Um, issuing those and start paying debt service in twenty-six. So you, you, it wouldn't change the project timing, but it wouldn't give us a, an as much time to start building up revenues from the lost.
Regardless though, Bruce, we'd want to get.
To the. Regardless, we'd want to get the legislative approval, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
There, there's not much, um, um, yeah, my crystal ball is only as murky as yours, everyone, but, um. I can, I can tell you that, um, if you want lost as part of the, the, the recipe. Uh, you should absolutely still go, uh, in the twenty-three session. All right. Well, I, I know I'm going to be, uh, blowing through my twenty-five minutes very quickly. So let me, um, keep moving if I could. And please though, do stop me with any other questions as we go and, and I'll certainly be happy to come back to you. Um, ideally in person, um, for further conversations. I just wasn't able to make it up there today for this afternoon's conversation. So this is again, I'm a little bit on your debt levy and, and I, I apologize. I, I know, um. We did discuss it our last finance committee meeting or the last one I was able to attend that you have already dedicated some of that debt levy. So some of these numbers, uh, you know, will need to get tweaked as we go forward, but you, you still have a long runway, right? And we're still figuring things out in terms of the design and what the ultimate cost of the project will be. And so we'll keep refining these financial scenarios as we go forward and get you better and better information. Uh, you know, as, as we proceed, but you don't have a lot of debt outstanding, um, here in fiscal twenty-two this year is your high watermark. And then you see the big drop down to one point one million, uh, for the next three years. And then you're just down to about, uh, a little over four hundred thousand in, in twenty twenty-six before everything falls off altogether. So that, that is really a wonderful place to be, starting from, um, and gives you a lot of flexibility in terms of. How you feather in a new debt levy for some portion of the new jail bonds. Um, I did want to just note that, uh, your current NTC for this fiscal year is about forty-one million dollars. I'm sure you're aware of that and how it's growing for fiscal twenty-three, your current tax rate. Um, your current levy for this year, a little over twenty-six million. And that if you increase that rate by one percentage point, that'd add about hun- four hundred and twelve thousand dollars to your levy. And, and you know, with some, uh, uh, assumed modest growth in your tax base, um, it would be an estimated four fifty in twenty twenty-six. So, um, again, also we can update this analysis going forward with your, uh, updated NTC and. And updated tax rate and, and see how that moves things forward. So I really wanted to just show you quickly what a bond scenario might look like. I'm sure a number of you are familiar with this from a, a past bond issue. But you know, this sixty million dollar scenario, for instance, the first one that we ran. Were, were targeting that deposit to the project construction fund of sixty million dollars. There's a su- some assumed cost of issuance here that are roughly six hundred thousand dollars, including the, essentially the sales commission. To the winning underwriting firm. Um, and then we're estimating a total power amount of sixty million, six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, in actuality, because of how bonds are getting purchased at a premium right now, um, you could actually have a bond amount of under sixty million dollars. But with the premium that the winning bid provides, you would still have a project construction fund of sixty million or whatever you need it to be. This is the first part of the debt service scenario, uh, for that sixty million dollar scenario. So you can see. Principal and interest payments on a six, one, twelve, one cycle and how that average debt service we're starting at about. Four point one million dollars if we just round up a little bit. Um, these again are inflated, uh, bond coupon rates. Bond interest rates, uh, fifty percent over fifty basis points, excuse me, over current market rates. That's another thing I just wanted to mention quickly. I'm sure you've all heard about how fixed income bond rates have increased since last January. Um, but we're still in a, a very low range of the historical, um. Rate curve, uh, in terms of, you know, what your rates might be. So yes, we've seen a run-up. They've actually stabilized quite a bit in the last month or two and it's anyone's guess as to, you know, where things will go between now and twenty twenty-five. But again, we're still quite low. If you look at where rates have been over the last twenty, thirty years. But again, we're still quite low if you look at where rates have been over the last twenty thirty years, um so. Still pretty advantageous um borrowing conditions for an issuer like the county. And that's, this is the second half of that same chart. So you can see total principal again of sixty million, six hundred thousand, estimated interest of about forty one million. And then total debt service of just under a hundred and two million. This is assuming no refundings for interest cost savings down the road. Even though these bonds or any other bond issue would be callable after nine or ten years and you could take advantage of. Um, any ability to refinance to reduce your your borrowing costs. Uh, you can see the average interest rate here in this scenario is about four point three million or four point three percent, excuse me. Okay, so um again, I'll go through the sixty million dollar scenario, probably most detailed and not so much on the other ones. But you can see that here we're estimating four million dollars, paying the lion's share of that debt service from the a fifty. Basis point or point five percent lost. Uh, we would just retain a little bit of the county's freed up levy capacity in twenty twenty six and beyond. So you'd have the the vast majority of that levy capacity available for other purposes, including other capital needs or other operating needs. And and certainly no need for any new debt levy. So put graphically, uh everyone, you can see again, four and four point one million of estimated debt service. Almost all of that being paid from a new lost and just a little bit of debt levy, a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, from property taxes. If you actually see growth in your sales tax collections at a two percent annualized year over year rate. Uh, which seems pretty modest as a as an average, you know, you might have some years where you go up eight percent and some years where you might go down four percent. But if you average that to a assumption of two percent per year, you can see that that need for any property tax levy goes away. After two or three years, let's say, right? Because you're just growing that that sales tax base and it obliterates the need for. For certainly any of the orange and actually all this extra blue means you could pay off the bonds faster than in twenty fifty. So you've got, you've got some some room there. And. You could, in theory, look at possibly looking for legislative and voter approval for something other than the jail in addition. If you wanted to be able to use sales taxes to get something else done as well, if you did experience this kind of um inflation in your sales tax collections. I'm not going to go a whole lot through these eighty and a million dollar scenarios. Again, here you'll recall it's about five point four million dollars of debt service. We're looking at using um in this scenario, uh possibly one point one million of your freed up capacity. I know that that may not be fully available in the long term um due to some other policy priorities that you've made and will want to make. Perhaps in the future. But um if we add any kind of inflation to that four million dollars, you can again see. That debt levy requirement goes away really quickly or or yeah, at least over the, you know. Fifteen years and then and then the sales tax, the same sales tax stream is enough to cover debt service. And then finally, a million dollar scenario, this is a, this is a tougher lift. Um. You might want to look at a higher sales tax rate if you are looking at um a lift like this of a hundred million dollars. We want to use freed up levy capacity here um either by. Clawing that back from some other priorities that you might have or you have identified. Or by uh doing some new uh levy authority over time. So, you know, this is very doable. I think you you can make this work without a huge impact on your taxpayers. But you can see there's more need for more financing sources. And even with inflation, you're going to need. You know, whether it's quote freed up levy capacity from past debt or whether it's new levy. The kind of inter i- i- you know interchangeable, but there's going to need to be some additional uh dollars put on the table or. A higher uh local option sales tax rate. This is a chart you might have seen um that I produced after our meeting in late late July. Um, again, the same debt service numbers for the three scenarios. Assuming a loss brings in just a flat four million dollars per year. With your existing tax levy of about twenty six million. So what we're doing here is just saying, okay, if you did a lost alone, uh you know, how much? And I actually brought this down to four million, just so it lines up. Um, with the lost re- requirement as well, but you can see if we just relied on a lost um commissioners. That would, that half cent would probably be enough to cover the debt service on sixty million. Uh, you'd need a higher rate, um the exact amount percentage you would need would be a point. Six, seven, five rate, but Minnesota would require you to do a point seven, five rate because you can only go. Um, in eighths of a point here. Um, so for full funding, you'd want a a point seven, five. And here you would want a point eight, seven, five rate to just fund it completely through sales tanks. If you just did a levy with no sales tax. The dollar increase would need to be, not the rate increase, but the dollar increase would need to be fifteen percent. Or twenty percent or twenty six percent a above your two thousand and twenty two levy, so. A a pretty big increase in terms of the dollars. And then if you did a combination of a half cent lost. And a levy increase, you can see, then you wouldn't need any levy in this first scenario, just zero percent. A five percent increase in the twenty o- over the twenty two levy or a ten or eleven percent increase. So. From my perspective, this is where you can really see the the perspective benefit of a hybrid approach um of some sort. And 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 having a big. Foundation from the lost and then a variable amount above that with with the property tax levy. Then finally, I I can certainly build this out in a lot more detail. And here, I I didn't even make this fully consistent, I'll I I can do that, but again, it's not a huge difference. Here I went back to that four point one million dollar.
Before you continue, we have a couple of minutes before our five o'clock meeting, so just to let you know.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so just really fast, everyone, um we can run more scenarios like this with more detail. But we've got the ability here to, you know, estimate a ga- a jail bond levy. And sorry, this should be county ta- a tax capacity, but estimate your tax capacity in twenty six and beyond as well. And then come up with some estimates for different types of residential homesteads, C I properties and A properties. So why don't I stop there and um I appreciate your time and and if. I know you don't have a lot of time, but does anyone have any immediate questions or or requests for additional information?
Very informative, those. Thank you. I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you, Bruce and Ben.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to or move the administrator's update to uh the work meeting. And that will be.
I put a number eleven.
Eleven, yeah, okay. All right, so we'll uh adjourn for a couple of minutes and then be back here. Well, you already lost one, so.
Hello, county regular meeting, Georgia, we start for the eligible agents.
I want to leave to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one way and under God individual.
All right, general comments by the board chair. As always, it's good to see a crowd in the audience. Today is also the first day of school for many, many children. So let's uh. Let's hope that they have a good school year. Citizens addressing the board. Anyone wishing to address the county board on an item not on the agenda may come forward at this time to be recognized by the board chair. Please state your name and address for the record. Comments are limited to five minutes. A personnel complaint against an individual county employee may not be heard initially. At a board meeting, personnel complaints may be submitted to the board and writing to the county administrator's office. The person addressing the board may not use profanity or vulgar language.
Good evening, uh, my name is Randy Bird, the U R G. I live at eighteen twenty-six Monroe Avenue, Southwest and Bemidji Township, Fisher Anderson is my official. I am retired. For over twenty years, I served as an assistant Beltrami County Attorney. During several years of that time, I also served as Beltrami County's representative. The Kitchigami Regional Library System Board. It was my honor and privilege to spend much of that time as president before. By virtue of that experience, I am familiar with the statutory requirements imposed on participants in a regional library system. And particularly those relating to minimum maintenance of effort. I want to first thank my fellow Beltrami County residents and their representatives. For their longstanding tradition of support for the regional library system. Beltrami County has long recognized the value of access to hundreds of thousands of books. Recordings, films, and references and reference materials. That is only possible because of participation in a regional library system. The financial support Beltrami County has provided has truly been money well invested and spent. For their parts, the board and management of the Kitchigami Regional Library System have been faithful stewards of the money entrusted to them. Prudence and frugality in expenditure have permitted Kitchigami. To set aside a fund balance sufficient to provide for capital projects. Which will will be needed to meet the challenges of a growing and rapidly evolving universe of knowledge and information sharing. Thanks to the work of Marion Ridge and her successor, the citizens of the Kitchigami. Regional Library System will be able to keep pace with any population anywhere. In terms of access to arts, sciences, new technologies, and discoveries. I understand very well the competing demands placed on finite, finite pool of tax dollars to fund the many and increasing number of services. Citizens and the state legislature expect counties, county government to provide. That said, I feel most strongly that there is no more important service provided by the county to its citizens. Than ready access to the best sources of knowledge. And knowledge is power and the driving force of a bright future. As I consider our nation today, I fear that many of our citizens are filled with fear. Fear of the changes in the world that are occurring at a rapid pace. Fear that is spawned, I. Fear, I have fear by ignorance and bad information. I believe that misplaced public spending priorities have resulted. In a significant portion of our citizenry lacking the ability or inclination to engage. In rational structured information gathering, critical reasoning, and intelligent decision making. Responsible public officials need to ensure access to the best information to promote an enlightened citizen. They need to assure that the knowledge and wisdom accumulated by humanity's finest minds. Are available to every man, woman, and child in America. For this, for this reason, I am respectfully requesting that the board not implement. The proposed cut in library funding that they currently have under consideration. Such an action can only be regarded as arbitrary and draconian. Instead, I am urging the board to fully fund the modest three percent. Increase over existing funding that has been proposed by the Kitchigami Regional Library System. I thank you again for your past support for the library system and for your service to the job. Thank you very much.
Okay, Randy. Are there any others?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I'm a county taxpayer for the last twenty-five years.
Your name and your name and now just for the record.
We all live at fourteen forty-two Park Avenue Northwest. And I see we got some empty tables here. We're missing a few people. Up here, okay. I got a question. I need to get a DVD. I'm hoping one of you folks has one. It's called The Adronimus Strain. It's a sci-fi movie. You think any of you guys have that at home? No, no, okay. Well, you know, the library has it, so I'm in good shape. I'm also looking for the book of the same title. Cause I'm doing a little research project. They don't happen to have it, but there's other libraries in the system that do. So I could get it in like a day or so from another place, which is awesome. They provide some services for the county that none of us can do. I don't think anybody up here can get those. Books to me in a day or two, but they're in pretty good shape to do that. Now, I understand they want to cut thirty-five percent of their budget, which is quite a big chunk. Now, uh. That would cause lots of troubles for a lot of the people going to the place. We'd be reduced staff. Hours would change. It would affect my going there on certain hours. There's also a gentleman in the audience. His name is Era right there. He can help you with anything out there. If you've got a technical question on a computer, he's there to help. If he wasn't there anymore, I don't know what I'd do. I don't have anybody to fall back on, and I don't know if I could call you guys to do that or not. I understand there was a bunch of money given to Beltrami County as far as American recovery tax dollars. And I'm hoping maybe you can see to look into it to maybe. Get a few dollars from that, help them out. I'm sure there's a way y'all can work together to find a solution for this. Cause they are a very important part of Bemidji here in the surrounding area. Thank you for your time. Have a good morning.
Thank you. Are there any others wishing to approach the board?
Hi, my name is Richard Drummond. I live at twelve oh four Second Street Southeast in Bemidji. And I'm not going to stand here and try to rationalize the value of a library. Or the essential community function that it provides. If the library is part of your life, part of your family's life, you already understand this. I believe it would be a mistake to make cuts to such a vital resource. Our town has a state-of-the-art liquor store. At some point, we'll have a state-of-the-art jail, yet we are facing the prospect of having a substandard library. As a taxpayers pay, as a taxpayer, these priorities are out of order for me. I realize that a library doesn't generate monetary revenue, but it is nonetheless an important investment in both. The present and future of our community. Thank you.
Are there any others? Is there anyone else wishing to approach the board?
Star Lindico, forty-one hundred Neebish Avenue North, Northeast in Tenshrack, Minnesota. I am a regular patron of the Black Duck and the Muji Libraries and I've. Only been, I'm a short timer. I've only lived here three years, but I have found them to be a treasure and. Don't it be for both research and entertainment? And I can't think anything other, other place than a library where you can take a child. For both research and entertainment, but also you can take a senior with a poor vision to find something for enrichment. I plead with you, don't be the commissioners that cut the library. Think about the future. Think about your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dara. Okay, are there any others?
Patricia Lester, L E S T E R, eighteen fifteen Minnesota Court, Northwest Bemidji. Academic school teacher, Red Lake. And we do have libraries, but you know what? I spent an hour at this library. After I looked through the stacks. And picked up another book that they'd ordered for me because it's not up there and I wanted to use it with my sixth grade class. We don't have the facility up there to order that book and have it come in, but this library does. Because they're part of a system. That's what's so important. It's a cohesive system that works together and just like so many other things, just like the salary that you accrue. They need money to run a business because it is a business. You own a business. You own business. You own a business. You need money. Without money, what are you going to do? Sell potatoes because somebody's going to give you something for those potatoes? You need the money. We need the money. Think about it. Think about the money that you make coming to these meetings. Perhaps you'd like to donate some of it to make up a shortfall. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. All right, well. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, with the addition of the Administrator's Report Number Eleven. I would move that we pass the agenda.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Olson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Gosbiger. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Holson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. All right, on to the regular agenda, ratification of union contracts for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'm standing in for Linda Tran. She's on a much-needed vacation this week, so. I got the short straw and I have several of the next items to present to you, so you might best getting through them. The next item I believe is the ratification of union contracts to the county. As you know, we have eight unions or neighbor organizations in county. Last time we met in the last meeting, three of those union contracts were ratified by itself. Other four more that are being presented tonight for your consideration and hopefully ratification. Leaving one left. That particularly union is set for me tomorrow. And imagine if that passes the union, then we'll see that in a self-adjacent meeting. The four union contracts that are before you this evening are the Teamsters Communications, the Corrections Officers. The Teamsters Non-L licensed Correction Sargent, the Teamsters Assistant County Attorneys, and Ask Me Court House. Each of those four unions have been offered the same financial package and agreed tentatively as well as. By their subsequent unions. The financial package was a free-year term with the same step changes and COLA offerings. And healthcare contributions that you've already seen before. For the communications and correction officers, in addition to that, employees will receive a full consent increase. Or the base scale, whichever is larger, whenever they're working out of classification. Shift differential was moved from seventy-five cents to a dollar per hour and longevity pay have been sunsetted in all contracts. After January first of twenty twenty-three. For Teamsters Non-L licensed Correctional Sargent, the same differential has been offered at seventy-five cents goes up to a dollar per hour. There's been a slight adjustment in uniform allowances, adding a pair of footwear to the initial issue of eighty-five dollars. And then increasing the allowance by fifty dollars per year for uniforms. For the Teamsters Assistant County Attorneys, same financial package I mentioned before, a new MOU to have a little bit more. A better understanding as it relates to hours work in the office. And then Ask Me Court House, a new MOU discussing budget for work schedules has been added. That's discussionary only. There's no commitment that's been made to that. So those are the primary changes. Again, very similar to most of the other changes in union contracts with all exceptions that I've mentioned here. So that's before you for your consideration. And then, like I say, there's one union left to finally resolve, which we hope happens here very soon. I'll stand for any questions you have on that.
I made motion that we ratify that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Olson. Any further discussion? Tom, which, which union is, is the last one that we need to?
The last and final union is the Ask Me Health and Human Services.
Okay. There's no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Item nine, update personnel rules and approval of non-union compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of continuing with the theme of union contracts, we also have a non-union group of employees you're well familiar with. And essentially their adjustments to pay fairly similarly follow those of the unions. To do this, we make an adjustment in the personnel rules. And so I wanted to just walk through some of those adjustments that are being considered. The financial package has been offered to all the unions and has been accepted by all the unions pending tomorrow night. Both by the Public Human Services is also the same financial package being offered to the non-union employees. So in addition to that, there are some language changes in the personnel rules which apply. And bring up those personnel rules up to the same standard as most of the union contracts. Some of those include language changes on the application process to address electronic forms, record retention, and eliminated positions. Updating language to meet new law changes for mothers and voting rights. Those are state mandated. Increasing the PTO accrual to bring it in line with some union contracts for non-union members. Adding a one-eight-hour floating holiday for exempt employees to bring it in line with exempt employees and other unions. Adding one day of funeral leave for an aunt or an uncle to match other union contracts. Changing the longevity paid to match union contracts so that it will sunset also. For non-union members on January first, twenty twenty-three, that's for new hires. And just to be clear, that's for new hires going forward, who have longevity pay, keeps that longevity pay until they leave. Working out of classification, language changes, employees will receive a four percent increase or a base scale. Increase whichever is larger, that's in alignment with the union contract that we talked about. And then renewing the post-employment healthcare savings plan for non-union employees as required every three years. And in alignment with the other union contracts as well. So those are the major changes to the personnel rules for non-union employees.
Mr. Chair, so.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
I want to break my streak though.
Second by Commissioner Olson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Item ten, twenty twenty-three employee insurance.
All right, Mr. Chair. Last up on the regular agenda for HR-related items is. The recommendation for the twenty twenty-three employee insurance. We're asking for the. For his favorable consideration to approve the employee healthcare insurance rates for twenty twenty-three through final call. Those renewal rates came in at an average of four point one percent as an increase. So you need to make some adjustments to the deductibles, which are not our choosing. They are fourth on us by IRS rules. So that would be increasing the HSA Viva contributions to both the fifteen hundred and the max out-of-pocket. To sixty-seven hundred for single plans and ten thousand two hundred for the family plan. Again, pursuant to the IRS rules. Also asking for favorable consideration in approving the core life. Insurance offering from a ten thousand dollar minimum to a twenty thousand dollar minimum. This does not require a. Help history in order to secure this additional coverage and it's my understanding that it's been ten thousand dollars for years and years and years and years. The insurance committee looked at this and said, you know, cost of burial and funeral related expenses has grown beyond that ten thousand dollars. So it makes sense to increase that. This is a small adjustment there being made. And then finally, not finally, but also approving the increase for short-term disability maximum benefits by about two hundred dollars to twenty-eight hundred dollars. And then lastly, just approving all voluntary benefit plans. That are, that are scheduled to remain unchanged for twenty twenty-three. I won't go through all of those. They were in the packet, but I can address any questions you might have on it.
Chair, I think most of the employees.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Gosbiger. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Olson. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say, you know, I'm on the, on the Prime West Health or the Prime Health Board. And this is our, we're entering now, I believe, our fifth year with the, with the self-insurance pool. I, I don't recall which, but a couple of counties have backed, I think three counties have backed out of this. And they are kind of kicking themselves right now because I think they're seeing higher rate increases than we are. This four point one percent rate increase is a huge victory, I think, for us. We've been trying to stabilize the, the. The, the rates of increase. We've been a lot of peaks and valleys over the, over the years. Seeing sometimes a zero percent increase as kind of a sweetheart deal. Get us in and then the next year we see a twenty percent increase or a seventy percent increase. To, to be able to keep it at this, in single-digit increases was kind of our goal. And this is really great. You know, we had a very rocky start. Our first year, we had. A claim that was. Truly catastrophic and it looked like it was going to make it really difficult for us, but we've been able to shore ourselves up and. And have some stability and dependability and predictability, I guess, of our, of our health needs. So I'm really excited that we are still part of this and that we are continuing this experiment. And I think we're going to see other counties join us and we will grow stronger over time. And this was a great part, so I'm very happy to vote for this.
And, and to add to that, it's a contract. Each year is different, but we've committed for another five years.
All right, hearing, no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have just a few brief announcements and updates for you. On the jail project, I just want to give you a update on the progress. I have just a few brief announcements and updates for you. On the jail project, I just want to give you a update on the progress of the community outreach. Uh, we did finish the special edition of the county newsletter. That's going to be delivered throughout the next week for ten days or so. And um, that was a, a special edition. It has everything in about the jail. There's nothing else really in there except the jail, how to get involved, get information. Uh, the details of the various options and those kinds of things. So that's going out here soon. I will be putting four advertisements in the uh, Mission Pioneer newspaper, uh, publishing public notices for special meetings on the website and also in the newspaper. Um, we are meeting with the very service folks here over the next week and week and a half or so. Uh, and the online, online comment portal as well as the survey is available now for those in the community to kind of poke around, provide ominous state surveys, those kinds of things. Uh, we'll be accepting comments and survey, um, surveys until September twenty-first. Um, as part of our meetings uh, that we're, we're going through to try to educate, inform and involve the, the community. Uh, tonight, there's a presentation being uh, made to Black Duck City Council. Uh, Jared Walton is, is making that presentation uh, because the sheriff's out of town at the moment. Uh, we do have a town hall meeting set for Thursday, September eighth. So just a couple of days at the Tullier Community Center at five o'clock. Uh, there is another town hall meeting scheduled. This is all pursuant to discussions around the jail. Uh, that additional town hall meeting is on Tuesday, September thirteenth, right here in the town board room at five o'clock. Uh, September nineteenth, there'll be a presentation made to the Division City Council. And then uh, we don't want you to forget that there is a special uh, county commissioner meeting on and public hearing on September twenty-second, right here uh, at five P M. That is where essentially all of the results of, you know, the survey and of the comments and as well as additional feedback we've gotten through the town halls and what you'll gather from the public hearing will culminate uh, and be presented to you. Um, and uh, from that point, uh, what we've realized is that it would probably be premature at that point in time to ask you to make a decision that evening, right? Probably some time to collect your thoughts and uh, synthesize all the information, that sort of thing. So what I'd like to do is uh, propose that uh, I guess a couple of different things. We'll, we'll want to have a meeting on your decision fairly soon in order to keep the project scheduled. Uh, there's a couple options that the steering committee is, is kind of throwing out. One of those options is just to uh, place uh, that conversation as it relates to your direction, your decision on the October fourth meeting. Um, you won't need to be accepting any more public hearing or testimony or that sort of stuff. The reason I, I say say that with a little reservation is because October fourth is scheduled as an out of the boardroom meeting. It's up at Echo's Town Hall. And so while people, this will be an open public meeting as we always have, it has to be coinciding with our remote meeting schedule. Um, so depending upon your comfort level as to whether or not you want to kind of make the decision here with the, the maybe a little bit better um, technology that we have as opposed to uh, having it out of, of uh, the boardroom, October fourth could be a date that you can consider. If you don't want to hold it, hold that conversation, that ultimate decision out of the boardroom, you could opt for a special uh, commission meeting. Recommendation would be either October fifth or October sixth, kind of the, the scheduled meeting.
Why, why is it that we are in such a rush to make the, excuse me? Wh- why is it that we're in such a rush to make a decision? I mean, we, we've been working on this for years and now we're going to make a decision right after basically the um, the, the public hearing. Um, I, 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 can you explain what the, the need is to, to?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Olson. So um, as it relates to the project schedule that was developed over a year ago, there was a series of activities and events that needed to take place in a certain timeframe in order for us to meet the milestones to keep the project moving. Talking with the project manager, um, Ben Matson with the construction engineers, we consulted on how quickly or how slowly we might have in order to continue in this process without compromising the schedule. Uh, what we're being told is that we have to have essentially uh, all of our information ready to go to the state to ask them for the permissions uh, for uh, the tax in the, the, the local off and sales tax. Uh, essentially start socializing that information this, later this year, so November, December time in preparation of submitting it to uh, the state in early January. To cut off for submitting that permission or that request for permission is January thirty-first, as I'm, I understand. So the thinking around the discussion on this was to try to socialize with local area legislators. So they're not surprised. That seems to be uh, something that's being advised. And then have our package in as early in January as possible. Uh, so the time needed between whenever this decision is made and those timeframes is kind of what is being considered here as it relates to squeezing the schedule.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, we know, Tom, that we are going to be doing something big and expensive. So I don't know that we need to know exactly what that product is going to be before we start reaching out to our lawmakers. Um, and even if we had a little bit of a pause, I mean, this is this is easily the biggest decision that I'll make in my tenure as a county board uh, member. And I really don't like, I don't, I don't want to be rushed into it. I would uh, rather take a bit of a pause and really go through it and take some time. Um, so I would, I would recommend that we did it maybe in November. There's still plenty of time uh, to get our, our um, our request into the legislature by the end of January. But that would be my, my uh, uh, suggestion. I'm only one, but my suggestion was that we do it at the, the fifteenth of November. I don't think that that's going to set us back really at all. I mean, we're going to be spending five hundred million dollars over the next thirty years. We're just figuring out how, you know, is, we're figuring out the specifics of it, but I think that we can go to the legislature and say, hey, we're going to be spending a pile of money and we want, you know, we can prep them before we uh, have every single I dotted and T crossed.
I also want to let you know that I will be out of uh, out of town uh, the first week of October. So uh, Commissioner Anderson would be having a chair uh, the October fourth meeting. That's kind of out of town here. So so October fourth, I, I wouldn't be in favor of.
What I can do, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but what I can do is tomorrow we have a steering committee meeting. So I can take the desire of the board back to steering committee and then uh, see what impacts that might have to schedule. And then we have time, so I can go back to the next meeting. It was off this time of the morning. Um, so I don't know that you have to make that decision like. Give you any impacts if, if there are any as it relates to schedule. Um, and then you can take that.
And I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench into your timeline, but um, the steering committee does work for us, right?
And uh, in regards to, to these meetings uh, that are um, in the community, those are advertised as, as public meetings. So, so if there happens to be uh, three commissioners that have to show up.
Correct. Yes, we're noticing the two town halls and the public hearing on the twenty-second. Um, and then uh, the other meetings that we're having like the Rotary or Pre-Redmondji or Lions, but those I think we're not, we're not assuming they're going to be at all of those. So we have private meetings of those organizations.
Okay.
And that's.
Council meetings are already publicly noticed. So, um, you know, and, and you can listen in on that as long as you're not speaking and that sort of thing. Those are public meetings as they are.
The twenty-second, just to make sure I have it right in my calendar. It's at five o'clock, correct? Right? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with doing it as soon as it's practical. I mean, obviously if you're going to be gone on the fourth, that doesn't work. Uh, uh, but I, it I don't think we need to prolong it a super long time either. He got a lot of information that we've had to put some time here on him, so.
All right, very good. I'll take that information back and then uh, I'll follow up at this point here. Um, another update I want to give to you is the Aurora Walks uh, Waske, Waske, yeah. A W C Old School that used to be over here in the C F B building. Um, they are, as you know, in a lease with the county for three years. Uh, they uh, vacated the property and are now delinquent two months on their lease. I just want to bring that to your attention. I have uh, noticed them uh, just, you know, in an email only at this point in time that uh, we have not received uh, August and thereby September lease payment. Um, as we sort of have anticipated, this may become a bit of a challenge for the county. Uh, what's at stake here is that if they're not going to pay for the remainder of their lease, uh, that would equate to a two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar uh, revenue loss to the county. Unless the county decides it wants to do something about that. Um, so I have, uh, as I said, emailed uh, the executive director, have not gotten a response. So not sure exactly uh, what we want to do here. I can wait a little bit longer and see if I can solicit some kind of response. Uh, but uh, just wanted to put that on your radar as a potential challenge for the county going forward. Uh, we have worked very hard to try to relet the space. I've had probably three or four different organizations or agencies or whatever look at the space. We sat down and talked about recent lease rates. We've been, we just, we're just not able to move forward as we hoped. Uh, the best prospect was the daycare. We talked to you about that some time ago. Uh, that's is, is, is not moving forward like we had hoped. So uh, the space still remains. Uh, but it's lawfully leased to school and they are under the obligation to pay those uh, lease payments until we can get this down. So.
Mr. Chair, is, is that daycare program, is that done or is it just not moving as fast as we want? And there's still a possibility that that could come back?
The word that I have as the person leading the project for greater revenue is no longer there. And that they couldn't, before they left, get enough of the employers on board to sponsor enough spots. And so it doesn't look likely.
That's unfortunate.
It's very unfortunate. Yeah. Um, okay, uh, in another bit of bad news, uh, the Health and Human Services Director Becky Seacor has tendered her resignation. So uh, we're very saddened by this. She had talked, uh, when, when I, we were doing performance evaluation this last year. She thought that would be coming soon. Uh, she's made it effective uh, December thirty-first. So she's given us a good four months or so to uh, you know, get a game plan and try to hire her position. Uh, and I know it's been a very tough decision for her. She has a long, successful tenure career with the county. She's done amazing things for us. Um, and uh, she's going to be very, very, very sorely missed. Uh, I don't have a plan for you yet on kind of how to proceed. Just got this last week. Um, and it was, as I understand for her, a very difficult decision too. Uh, she has a great team though and uh, really great senior management staff. So I, I think we're going to be okay. Uh, but we'll get a game plan and I'll, I'll come to you and we'll figure out what to do going forward. Uh, lastly, I just wanted to, and Diane, I don't know if you have the language we could give to the board. I wanted to let you know, we're looking at making a slight modification to the language on the agendas. Just modernizing it now that we're sort of, I don't even know if you call it post-pandemic or not. I mean, but essentially I think the pandemic thing is still going on, but this is, you know, we've kind of gotten back to a normal cycle. The language that was in the agenda um, and the agendas for the board uh, is just being recommended to be updated here. There's really three very small updates that I wanted to bring to your attention. One, we wanted to um, uh, move up the time that people who wanted to comment to the board during the public comment period, you know, at the beginning, uh, not be at five o'clock. We wanted to move it up till noon. So that gives Diane just a little bit more breathing room to organize. Uh, you know, sometimes it's very difficult to try to get somebody to link and get them on board and set up the Zoom comments. If, if we just don't have adequate time. Fortunately, we haven't had a lot of people doing that, but we just want to move that up as a standard business practice. The second thing is we were wanting to remove the public comment period restriction uh, from twenty minutes in total to just whatever it takes, you know, uh, which is kind of a practice you already have, uh, as it is. So last week was a great example. And then third, um, we, we're just organizing the order of comments such that Zoom participates. Zoom particip- participants would comment in the order that they enter the waiting room. And after in-person comments are made, it just seems courteous to do that. So folks who drove here probably want to get back home as soon as they can. So we're just kind of ordering that. So those are the three main adjustments. They're really not big things, but I just didn't want you to be surprised. And I also wanted to give you an opportunity to say, no, we don't want to change any of that stuff or, or whatnot. There's one other thing I'll just throw out there, um, because I have had a commissioner bring it up in the past. Um, but nothing's come of it, but I'll bring it up now just since we've got the language in front of you. There's been some conversation about uh, you know, whether or not the time that the public asked to comment should be five minutes or something different from that. Maybe four, maybe three, especially when there's a lot of folks that want to comment. Uh, five minutes can cause for a long time uh, before everybody's heard. So this would be an opportunity if you wanted to entertain that, you know, to do so. Otherwise, you can leave it at five minutes. I don't think administratively, there's any harm to us at all. It's just kind of what you feel as a board, since we're already making a couple of modifications. Uh, recommendation that might be one you might want to consider too, because that is in the language of the agenda uh, as well. So that I'll turn it over to you. See if you have questions, comments, or comments.
Any questions for Tom?
I'll just comment on that and say the city uh, has, and not that we have to do everything that the, that Bemidji does or whatever, but their, their time limit is three minutes. And I'll be um, honest, when, when we have a room full of people and I know that everybody's going to get up and talk and they go like, wow, what's forty times two is, is eighty minutes. And we would, you know, save a lot of time and still be able to hear people. So I, I'm I'm fine with the five minutes, but I, I could be convinced to, to change it if, if, if other people on the board wanted to, but um, most people don't, even like you noticed today, me, I don't know that anybody took their full five minutes. It's five minutes is unless I'm up there talking, five minutes is a lot, lot of space to fill. I don't have any problem talking for five minutes or more, but um, which may not surprise anybody. Um, but um, so I, I, we may not need to change it because I, most people speak for about two or two and a half minutes.
Well, it depends on, on the issue.
I suppose so. Yeah, yeah. They're still mad that you, you asked them to.
That's all I have for you.
All right.
I'd be fine with, with the change if you guys wanted to, otherwise five minutes is fine too.
I'm fine with change.
What, what change? I mean, is it, is it three? Oh, oh, okay. Oh, I, I thought you were talking about the five-minute reel or, or three-minute reel.
No, I think this is, I think this is cleaning it up. This is good.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tom. All right, we will move on to the uh, legislative lobbying and commissioner's report. Commissioner Anderson?
I'm fine tonight. Thanks.
Commissioner Olson?
Um, I just want to say, I, it looks like this is the first fall that I'm going to miss the Fall Policy Conference, the AMC Fall Policy Conference, and I am just devastated by that. That's my update. I love that guy. I love talking policy. I love the, the group that I, the committee that I served on for, for many years now. And um, yeah, I'm just, I'm just really sad.
Or, you know, and Commissioner Olson, I want to remind you, you know, that, that these AMC events are, are an opportunity to, to bring forward any uh, proposals uh, that we don't really see fit here in the, in the boardroom. Um, you know, such as the, the uh, minimum maintenance effort, you know, I mean, I think that would be a, a good, a good avenue and a good start to, to address that, you know? Um, so I, I mean, I, I, I do believe that AMC um, conferences' functions are, are beneficial.
I'm going to try to sneak over on Thursday for the, for the one to, one P M to four P M um, committee session. Um, but I don't know if I'm going to be able to make it. That's my, my hope. Will, I will, I would, would mention though that again this year, and I don't know why AMC does this, but again, this year they are scheduling the um, the annual meeting, um, the first couple of days of um, of December. And so that would cover, that would be one of our um, meeting days. And so just looking out ahead, a lot of times we will um, move our first meeting in January to the, uh, in December to the second meeting of them, of the second week of the month. Thank you. And I, I would respectfully request that we do that this year, just throwing that out early. We don't have to make that decision today, but.
Yeah, you know, and I know as, as a member of the AMC board, it is a, a discussion that we have because oftentimes, you know, the, the county boards don't meet on the same time and days that we do. And so I mean, they're, they're trying.
There are some counties that meet on the second, on the second Tuesdays and not the first Tuesdays of the month. So I think that they're trying to accommodate.
Yeah, yeah. So I know uh, from a board perspective, you know, we, we try to, try to accommodate, you know. try to accommodate, you know, the best that we can.
Always know you're gonna upset at least forty-nine percent of the of the constituency. And Mr. Chair, for what it's worth, we did catch that this year, and we moved the board meeting to the second. Oh, we already made that change. That's already been done. That was announced. Uh but what that does is it gives you essentially one week, because the following week you'll meet again for, actually, yeah, the twentieth, you'll meet again for the final budget approval.
Commissioner Gosbiger?
Yeah, I had the planning commission, fair board meetings. Uh Fair Board was a very successful fair this year, even with the road construction out funds. That was great. Uh good to see. Um they they do have some, with the decrease in the in the development fund monies. Um they do have, because those are actually county-owned buildings, um some potential requests for funding for fixing roofing and stuff and things like that, that uh I I know they've been in contact with with um our facilities manager, Steve Shadrick, and so that could end up being a a future future neater request there. Um one watershed, one plan. Uh we had our meeting. Uh and um I asked if we could get an update on projects, since the projects aren't really all done and not yet. We're actually gonna have a joint um advisory board and policy committee meeting February twenty-eighth of this coming year. And um I should be able to report back on kind of a synopsis of the projects that were completed and and where we're at with our milestones and our goals and that, so it'll be be fun to to see how that all worked out in our first year. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Gosbiger. Uh as for myself, I will be attending the AMC uh Fall Policy meetings next week, and also on uh, say, kudos to Commissioner Anderson and Olson for for their work on the the Prime West Board and and uh the the significant allocation that you made to the Red Lake Tribe uh for their their operations at the the treatment center, so uh thank you, gentlemen. And uh so that will be it for my report, but I do notice that we have a hundred and ninety more pages left on the on the packet, so if we if we can go through them, that would be be good. Uh review your upcoming meeting schedule, and we will adjourn, so. Have a good night.